Go ahead.
Ready?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Bob. I'm not like a recording. Good job. Streaming and everything?
He didn't stream.
Is it? No, it's not. So it's 3:01. All right, it's 3:01 and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We already had a pledge of allegiance. We'll go ahead and have roll call. In attendance, we have Bob, Doug, myself, and Ed, and I believe Katie is going to be absent at this meeting.
She is.
Okay. I need a motion for approval of the final agenda.
I have one request prior to you approving that.
I assume we're going to move somebody up.
Yes. We did have a request from Stony Brook HOA to move item 13A up on the agenda, preferably to wherever you put it.
And they have a non-commitment, right?
Yes.
We can just move it in after public comments. They can leave.
Perfect.
Way up.
That's priority placement.
All right, so I need a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead and move to public comments.
Well, now are you going to do approval of the agenda? Or was that all inclusive?
Yeah. So we'll go ahead and do public comment and then we'll move to start. Katie, we can't close the door because there'll be a closed-door session. Thank you. Sorry.
I can do it. I have something. I got it.
All right, two public comments, one agenda, one non-agenda. First one is Ed Hedges regarding item 11B, which is the budget. And Ryan, you're three minutes. I will start it after you. Notes are moving in.
Good morning or afternoon. Ed Hedges, 10532 Azura, P-PAC Vice Chair. We've been, P-PAC submitted, addressed the budget at our last meeting, and one of the things that we wanted, our intent was to add in the budget for the full cost of the admin building, less what's covered by the bond. And right now, there's an amount of 265,480, which was an earlier estimate. We think it should be 418. And I submitted these things to staff earlier this week, but we haven't gotten any feedback on them yet. Because we think we ought, all that money will be spent in this year, and so we want to include that in the budget. Also, on the parks and rec, we have our share outlined in the budget in the table, but there's no, it doesn't address revenues for the parks. And the OO2 fund currently in the budget does not share in the revenues for the parks. So if we share in the expenses of the park, we should get the same share of the revenues for the park. The admin, the shared admin in the budget you've got before you is just 33.33, a one-third, two-thirds. If you look at the EAUs, it's slightly less than that. It's 31.84. So we think that the budget should actually reflect the actual percentage of the EAUs. And the roadway allocations, I used the numbers in the budget and the methodology that was in Russ's methodology report. And, you know, taking out the Stony Brook roads, I don't, I come up with very different numbers than what Russ has in his table, and I have tried multiple ways to duplicate his numbers, and I can't come up with those numbers. They actually, based on the calculations and the methodology that's in the methodology report, Pelican's share would be a little bit less than what the table shows. The final thing, I guess, was on the shared admin, there was a $15,000 discrepancy between what was in the shared admin versus his table. And as I dug through things, it appears to be that that was the holiday lighting for Gateway is going into the shared admin, whereas Pelican's holiday lighting is going into the Pelican direct admin. It's just, we think things ought to be consistent. You know, it's not fair for Pelican or the OO2 fund to pay all of the Pelican Christmas and a third of the Gateway holiday lighting. So just as you refine the budget, you know, looking at some of those inconsistencies, we'd like a little bit more, like to see a little bit more consistency in following the assessment methodology report and the actual percentages and treatment of the expenses. Thank you.
You want to just send our retreats to the board?
Just one quick question. Pelican, your holiday party, is that open to all of Gateway?
It's lighting. Physical lighting. It's the lighting, the holiday decorations.
Oh, your holiday decorations.
Yeah. Remember, we got over. The lights of the palm trees, the reeds.
I think that's the differentiator, right? That's labor's and materials, where ours is an event. Is that?
I'll talk about that later.
Okay. All right.
I think it's the same.
All right.
Next, you, please.
Jerry Knapp. Couple of non-agenda questions about, one is about pickleball courts, and the other one is noise reduction regarding said pickleball courts.
Yeah, I'm a Hampton Park resident for 17 years.
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jerry Knapp. My address is 12501 Astor Place. We're one of the homes that are adjacent to the FPL area, which is just on the other side of where the pickleball, the 12 pickleball courts are going to be.
Can you give your address one more time? So.
12501 Astor Place.
Astor Place.
We're at the end of Astor, next to the hedge, and therefore about 125, 150 yards from the pickleball courts. After watching the 60 Minutes show about how pickleball noise is causing problems, I'm curious as to, is anything going to be done or could be done to have a noise barrier between the pickleball courts and essentially the residence of Hampton Park? And when would, and my other question is, about when would you expect it to be completed? Just a rough estimate, 25, 26, 27?
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we can address that later on when we have the Parks and Recs with Paul. We'll address that, those questions when we have it with Paul said. I can give you two answers, but I cannot give you the third one. I don't know if you're looking at the address. I was looking at two, just so I can see exactly what he wants.
We can, we can hear kids laughing and giggling and screaming at the pool. So if we're going to have 12 pickleball courts closer to my home than the pool, I'm a little curious as to if anything can be done to minimize that noise.
They're corning, pickleball courts are quite now.
Correct.
We had a problem with that at Pelican Reserve. Relocated an entire softball field to accommodate the residents that would have been impacted where we put it in the very first spot. But it can be quite annoying.
I'm obviously not the only one, but I'm just one that.
Who was that one with? We'll address that when we have a presentation with Parks and Recs. And thank you.
Sorry, sir.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
We have that item on the agenda, so we'll address that during that item, okay? Do you have anybody else? No. That's it. Just the two.
So now what, will I hear about, hear from somebody or?
Yeah, if you sent during the meeting, when that topic comes up, we're going to have a discussion and then be able to answer your question. If it's not, we'll have Chelsea reach out and follow up. So have you gave your email address on that little note? Did you put it down?
I have to leave.
Okay, so then, do we have his email address?
No, you don't.
Okay, if you just put your email address there, Chelsea will do a follow-up, we'll definitely follow up with you.
Are you talking about 7A?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we would address it under, at least what we can, under 7A, under the agenda, because that's.
Pretty quick.
Which is next.
Which is like next.
And I can't speak.
Yeah.
And as a reminder, Jerry, this entire session is recorded and available to you later, but you don't have to just take the text. You'll be able to hear the comments that the board has.
I'm pretty quiet. I've been here 17 years and never been to one of these.
You're not alone.
There's no other additional comments.
Nope, just the two.
So we'll go ahead and move to, oh, local achievements and recognition. Do we have anything to share, Chelsea? All right.
I have one thing.
Go ahead, Bob.
We had a stop sign that was leveled over the weekend, last Saturday, and a resident had a bee fly in his car, and he reacted to that, forgot to hit the brake. At any rate, recognition to the public work, because they had a temporary stop sign up first thing Monday morning, incredibly fast. It is only temporary. They'll get the board permit one up and do the hell of a job on it.
Thank you. Want to go to 13A? Yes, ma'am. Tony?
Yes, I appreciate you moving up on the agenda. Katie Perkey is here on behalf of Stony Brook, and also I think JT is in the audience also. And again, this is an update, and I hand it out to you. We've been working fast and furiously and hard all week. I think Chelsea and Laura will confirm that. I think Katie will also, and JT, to try to address some comments we've received from Charles Mann on behalf of US Home. They had a good conference call earlier in the week, and there are still some issues that Charles needs to run by their in-house counsel, as well as US Home, WCI, and our itself. And so what you have in front of you, I hand it out today, is a red line version of some other aspects of three documents that we've been working on. And that's a product of, again, our conversation in conference call that we had with Charles Mann earlier in the week. And they are generally not substantive, we're just sort of changing the type of language as to what will be conveyed, and what the terminology is as to ownership, so as to address some questions or comments that Charles had. But the fundamental aspects are still the same. We clarify also about landscaping a guardhouse, will we go with the deed and the conveyance to the master association. And so again, what you'll see in front of you is a red line version, are subject to WCI's further review. They had comments also on the quick claim deed, and some language that was taken out they may want put back in. So that, again, that's sort of in a state of flux, but the, I'll call the principal components of these documents, as of this date, remain the same as far as the approach. And again, we're waiting back for some further comments from Charles and/or his client. So just want to let you see where we are to date. And we'd ask the board, basically, to approve these in substantially final form, so we can keep moving forward. And that with the revisions that you see in front of you red line, if there are any substantial changes, we will come back to you. And again, substantially final means that the overall substance of it will not materially change. If we need to change certain terminology or certain timeframes that are not material to the transaction, then that would cover the, in fact, what we do with bond issues, that these are in substantially final form. So this will request from the board, bear these questions. Otherwise, we've asked you to approve and adopt resolution 2025-15, approving the free litigation agreement and forms of the documents in substantially final form, with the revisions as handed out to you in the red line version today.
The blue line or the red line?
Blue, orange, red, whatever color it is, yes.
Yes.
And again, for example, the language that is taken out at the bottom of the quick claim deed is something that, it's not material from the district's perspective, so that was to go back in. I would not have, I would not say it's material or substantial. So if it's in or out, from the district's perspective, the district's neutral on it, maybe something that US Home and Stony Brook have an issue with the guards do, but that's, again, I'm looking at it from the district's perspective.
I still move that we accept the litigation.
Can I have one?
With the changes.
One, if I can.
I have one question. I talked to JT about this, I don't know if it was related to Katie yet, but I want, I would like a joint communication drafted between both parties to notify the residents if this comes to fruition, if you approve this today.
To give it to the residents? Before we approve?
No, no. If you approve it, that we work with the HOA as a joint communication to notify the residents of what.
We collaborate and I'll work with Clark to.
Yes.
Second, Bob's.
And we're okay with that? Katie, you agree with that? All right, so we have a motion, a second, and other questions? We'll go ahead and call for approval. On favor say aye.
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 Thank you. I also want to appreciate the assistance of Katie and Ellen, excuse me, on the East Coast. They've been working diligently hard on this, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Same thing. It's finally done.
We're getting there. We still have, again, I think we're all, I don't know, just have the WCI.
Clock is ticking.
I understand. We have, oh, it's been ticking.
All right, thank you, Katie. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so go ahead and have advisory committees and items to report, and Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, what to report.
Paul is here. Paul, I don't know if you want to present the Parks and Recs report.
The report?
Yeah.
And we'll move on to the presentation. Hi, everyone. Paul Leo Grand, 12504 West Haven Way. I'm here on behalf of the Parks and Rec Committee. Just a little background, I'll wrap it in as we go into the presentation. I am also the president of the HOA over in West Haven. I am the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Committee. Okay? So last month, we did meet, we spoke about some upcoming events, we're preparing for our red-white pool that's coming up, and we had some fun discussions on how we can enhance that for the community. We're talking about getting some T-shirts made for ourselves to represent Gateway, just so people know that, you know, they could come to us if they have any questions during the event. We'll be helping, you know, coordinate through the MC and go back and forth handing prizes out and all that, anywhere that we're needed on top of all the volunteers that so graciously join us. So that's the big priority right now. We did also, we had a few changes, and one we'll present to you today. Well, Ed Moore, he is our vice chair. He was, his term was up, and he absolutely was excited to re-up that. He wants to stay, so we're presenting him for another term. Also, Joseph Schofield wanted to join in, so we approved to present him to you all today to see if we could bring him in as a committee member. Other than that, we had some budget planning, prior resitations. We're looking at the capital improvement plan. We're trying to see where we fit into the budget, and we're going to talk a little bit about that in the proposal that we have for the pavilion. And yeah, that's upcoming, you know, '26, '27, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. And community engagement, we were discussing the idea of an email blast to increase public awareness about the committee and its works. Our attendance has been low for the past few months, and that may be because, you know, we're not in season anymore, who knows? But we really would like to boost the attendance on our meetings. We get a lot of feedback kind of secondhand, and we'd like people to come and contribute to the meeting. So we're talking about maybe doing an email blast for that, and also to promote upcoming events. It's cheap that way, and it's easy to kind of manage, right? Other than that, let's see here. That's the nuts and bolts of the report from last month. Yeah, at this time, we'd like you to consider the members before we move on to this.
That's separate.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to Mr. Schofield, be added and approved as a member of the.
There's two. There's two. And actually, it's agenda.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know it was an agenda.
Yeah. Do you want to skip to it right now, or do you want to just wait till we get this?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so we have a motion to appoint Joe and Ed. We have a second?
I'll second that.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so welcome back, Ed and Joe.
Do you want to move to the community pavilion before you move to Pelican?
It's good to have the millennial generation represented.
Get it all done right now, then, because that other, what he'll have to give me.
That's what I was going to say. I wanted to address some of these concerns. Paul, who put it? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
So regarding the two other questions, one was a sound barrier between his property, and I just pulled up on LIPA what his property is, between his property and what the pickleball courts are, there is a significant amount of space. So we have the entire length of the FPL heathman, and in between the house and the FPL heathman, there is a conservation area, which is fully wooded. I see there's probably a wetland here because it was kind of dry. And then we have an additional barrier, which this will be removed. I know you guys can see it. I'm going to pull it up for you.
Okay, so this is, this is the gentleman's house.
I'll bring it up on the screen. And this is where the pickleballs are going to go.
Does it give you a measurement?
It's about 200, it's about 200. The right away is 660, so divided by three is 220 yards. So you've got 220 yards plus 50, 270, 275 yards.
Yeah.
From his house to the.
And that's his house, but you have to start at the.
But his house is the first house. So you see, like, on the, can you highlight the conservation area?
This here.
That's a natural buffer.
Yeah, right there. So that's what it is.
So right there between the, between that road and his house, that's a conservation area, so that's all wooded, and that would be your sound barrier. That's about the buffer. Then you have from the sidewalk all the way with the proposed pickleball, we're going to highlight what the proposed pickleball is.
It's over here.
It's right here. So the area they are going to be removing is all the invasive, see the area right here? That's all that's coming out because that's all the invasives. We just decided a few years back that we weren't going to clean it up, because in case we did develop, we were going to pay for that removal twice, right? So there is already a buffer, I would consider a buffer within his house, but we as a board discussed, you know, either fencing or an additional landscape buffer within the park itself that would aid, but I think the best buffer will be what we already have.
This is where, I think I've mentioned it before, and just to note, what the recommended sound space or buffer for pickleball is about 500 feet. That's on average what they say, 500 feet is the length that noise will travel when you play pickleball. And I just, I just, so I mean, it's accurate plus or minus.
It's a lot louder than you expect it to be.
But it also depends on the surroundings. But this is where.
Yeah, there's no water here needed.
This is where I think might be a good idea for us to consider putting some, putting a berm raised on that side. On the back, there's nothing, FPOEs, but there's no reason to burn even that side.
You look on the other side of Griffin Drive.
I don't think you can build a berm high enough.
There's homes over there too. I don't know what.
Well, even if it's, you don't think it'll buffer a little bit?
That's what I was thinking, even an additional buffer of regular ficas, which, or.
Well, it's about raised, a raised berm of 10 feet, and then, anyway, but someone smarter than me would have to look at that.
If it's 500 feet, if that's the generally accepted number, this is well over 500 feet.
It is definitely.
Yeah, I estimated it at between.
Laura, can you imagine?
To your house, it's about 2,300.
Not in this, no, I pulled it up.
It's about half a mile to your house.
From there.
So from the very beginning, I think it's in between about 800 to 1,000 feet. So, I mean, it's outside the threshold, but it's something we need to pay attention.
Can I turn it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So pickleball courts, they have perimeter fencing around the courts, they do offer sound barrier. It's a double-sided sword because.
You tell me like a wind barrier.
Because then it's, then if people get hot, there's no wind that passes through that pickleball players complain. So it's, there are opportunities. Landscaping is a great one. The wetland is a great one. Those sound barriers could assist as well, so it's definitely on our mind when this is constructed.
Okay, so I actually looked, sorry, Ed, because I remember visiting the property. You actually have Hampton Park, about five years ago, planted an entire hedge of colossus. So you have, so not only have, they have the conservation right here, they have colossus, they're probably 15 feet tall, and probably six to 18 feet wide. So they have that barrier plus that, that's this.
Go to the country club. Hand up and go down to the country club. You get an idea of what we got. We've got colossus, we've got all of this.
I don't really ever hear much from the.
Blow up, blow up that corner right down there where the pickleball courts at.
I don't really ever hear.
Right.
Does your buffers work?
Oh, yeah.
We don't have a buffer, that's my point. There's our pickleball court, and all the way on the south side of Gateway Greens Drive are colossus, 10 to 12 foot high, the full length, and the three people that border up against that road are complaining about the noise.
They are complaining.
But, but you're within about 150 feet. Those three houses, right there along the.
These are here.
And it's colossus everywhere, and it's not, it's not impacting, so I think that goes along with what you're saying about the 500 feet.
Nothing from the, so when you get here, Ed, nothing from them?
These be, no, nothing from them.
And that's kind of the distance. This is the distance that we're looking for.
So the, I think, it sounds to me like what you're saying on that 500 is a reasonable number of what would be the differential on hearing it and it being offensive and not. And all of the stuff that we're talking about at the country club is well within 500 feet.
I think the good news is, staff has already identified it. They are somewhat planning. We need to take proactive measures within reason, and then we monitor it, because there's, even after the fact.
We're going to have to.
We can do some things afterwards, like even planting more vegetation or do some additional.
Well, the wood screens will help.
Show up the, put the Pelican.
I was going to say, put the tower so we can have an idea. Down. There, right here.
Okay, on the very, very top of the page, very, very top.
That's very close, yeah.
Okay, now, if you look at the original six courts, those six, they were very clearly heard and annoyed by the homeowners on the right.
Yeah, but they're literally adjacent to it.
No, 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 on the right, all you think, you see there's town center.
Mr. Trump.
No, go scan right.
Keep going, yeah.
Those houses that you see, over that bridge, it was like it was in there a lot high.
Because you have the water too, yeah.
Yeah, the water, very low water.
There's, it's a lot of open space, but I think it's a lot more than 500 feet. And all, I'm not saying we should do something immediately, but be aware, and I think the Mahogany Run people are going to be more, once it's installed, more subject to the noise than they will be. It's based on what we learned.
The Mahogany Run people, which ones that's, going back.
It's on the opposite side of the pool?
The opposite side of Griffin.
Yeah, we got, we got a seven-foot wall. That makes a big difference.
Oh, okay, all right.
We got a seven-foot wall. The people who will have any impact will be the people.
And you got road traffic, road traffic as well, so you're not.
Yeah, eagle point.
Because they have the water that echoes it.
Yeah, 112th Street.
All right, so we're looking into, we'll, we'll communicate more as.
But smacking those balls makes a lot of noise. It's not like that, it's quiet.
Can I speak briefly?
Paul, I'm sorry.
Can I speak briefly?
Sure.
Okay. I'm a retired ideologist. I understand the 500 feet, they're trying to, at 500 feet, a noise that can be bothersome is reduced to 53 decibels. 53 decibels is fairly easy to hear. You're hearing me at about 72 to 74 right now. We can hear the singing from the church, and we can hear the kids in the pool. So pickleball is a lot noisier than the kids in the pool. So when you use that 500 feet to say, well, okay, we have, we've met our criteria, that doesn't work. It's going to be noisy, and you're going to have to have some sort of a barrier in addition to the colossus.
So that's what we're saying. Parks and Recs committee and staff are looking into it. That is something that was already on.
Okay.
You're probably correct.
On the plans, we just don't know exactly what's going to be, but it's, it's, it's there, it's going to happen, we just don't know what's going to be.
Okay. Any idea on when it's gonna be, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
It's gonna be a year from now.
It'll be over the plane?
I'd open a year from now, that's destination.
Twenty-twenty-six.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick thing for the Parks and Rec, or even maybe for staff, um, this is the same, the red, white and pool, same event we had last year, right?
Yes.
Which was a huge hit, like.
Probably the biggest one.
Four, four hundred and seventy people.
Yeah, it was great. Um, the only, when I, because I took my boys there, um, the only thing is, if I were to make two recommendations, one, more activities within the perimeter of the pool, because we had the, the space that wasn't leveraged out there, whether it's activities or even just getting a tent just for people to sit on or, you know, for when they're, for eating and stuff. And the other is more make, more kind of structured pool games for the kids, just to keep them busy. Other than that, it was a great event and I'm looking forward to this year's.
What do you think about the food trucks?
Well.
I'm just thinking price point.
The food trucks? Yeah, I don't remember the price point.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think the price point, I, I think like hot dogs and burgers, I think the people were.
Here's what, here's what I would do.
Were there Lee County free ice cream?
I can get somebody to come out and cook hot dogs and hamburgers, sell them for a reasonable price.
Yeah.
And that, and those money gets donated to one of the local organizations. I've got a, I've got a group that'll probably do that. They would probably sell hamburgers for two fifty, you know, some, two, two fifty, three fifty for a hamburger.
That was, that was the feedback that I got from the people at the pool because everything was like twelve dollars.
It was a good, right.
And then, that was like the bare minimum, and then they had like five kids with them, and it was like literally three hundred dollars because then they wanted like three sodas, two ice creams and stuff like that. So if anything, because they had a lot of children and, you know, they take two bites and they want something else, I would just say a, either that or.
And there was something that we did.
We did years back with Manscaped, yeah, we used to do similar.
Well, but we also, um, when we did our summer event, um, we, when I said we, when I used to lead a nonprofit for, for Gateway, we would have chili cook-off at the event. So you had a lot of people cooking chili and they were selling their bowl of chili at really cheap. So, and that was a nice community event. We probably had ten to fifteen people just paying for the chili cook-off, um, which is cool. I mean, it brought additional people out that may not have originally.
It was a lot fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, it's, we had a few issues too with the food truck vendors. I know that there was a bunch of them that just bailed out on us and so the more that we could kind of take in-house would be better, I feel, anyway, right? So I think we'll definitely talk about that on our next meeting and I'll discuss, Carrie, those options. That'd be great.
I'll give you my, I'm gonna give you my number and let you and I.
I'll give you my card. Thank you.
How many hours we have allocated for staff to be working that day?
Uh, I think the event's all in four hours.
The event's four hours and I believe it's one before and one after.
Okay, but how many staff, like one, it'll be six, two will be twelve. How many hours do you have allocated for staff to be at the event?
I'll have to find out from Carrie.
Was staff part of the parking? I think they were, if I remember correctly.
No, those volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah, they're volunteers.
Normally it's, it's two.
One or two, yeah, so it's twelve hours.
Two, so, but I can find out from Carrie what the staffing plan is for them. But they're, between scouts and, and, you know, high schoolers that need hours, there we have a lot of volunteers.
Yeah. I was gonna say, we, we always have a lot of.
You got a lot of kids over there.
They got friends.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Did we wanna do the pavilion or?
Yes. Well, so we already did Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee.
Three, three staff and fifteen volunteers.
That was.
Oh, okay, that's what we have.
Good ratio.
Okay, that's Carrie plus Paul.
And I'd love to get input, like Bob from Pelican, I know you guys do your own thing, but it would really be nice.
Well, I was there last year, I mean, it was a nice event.
But it would be nice to have maybe even some activities, or even some volunteers from Pelican, just to give them over to.
This is not the year to do that, let's just leave it at that. Are you ready?
All right. Maybe we'll look at.
Joe's gonna bring some friends over.
Sure.
Well, maybe Joe can work on that.
Yeah.
Joe brings some.
No, maybe some of Joe brings, make them all hundred, five hundred.
Joe, that's what it takes?
Do you wanna move to Pelican's, I got the number report next.
We skipped it before.
Is there any, uh, any questions you have for Pelican?
I don't. Go ahead, I'll report to Sarah. Okay. And then we already did seven C.
Yep.
We'll go ahead and move to seven D, Paul again.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Paul Ehrgrin again, twelve five four West State Avenue Way, the president of the H O A there. I am gonna also mention that I am a real estate agent, I work and live in Gateway. Um, I also have a music background, not an audiologist, but I am, I do have a music background, I went to school for music education. So all of that is going to be important when we're discussing what we're proposing today as far as our next kind of really big initiative that Parks and Rec have been working on, right? So if we wanna go to the next slide.
Sorry, I lost.
Uh-oh. All right. So just a little bit about what we're proposing with this pavilion. The community pavilion proposal aims to enhance our neighborhood by establishing a dedicated multi-use gathering space. This pavilion will serve as a central hub for residents to come together, engage in community activities and create, or create meaningful connections. So purpose, just really quick, I don't need to read word for word, but community events, right? So it's a, it's a space where we could have, we could host celebrations, neighborhood meetings, social gatherings, we could provide a safe and inviting space for families, childrens and individuals to enjoy, and cultural educational programs, offering a venue for performances, workshop and learning opportunity. I'm gonna go into a little more, you know, detail of this, let me just go to the next slide and read through that. Okay, community benefits. Main community benefits, stronger community bonds, encourage residents to interact, collaborate and build relationships, so increase property values, this is a huge thing. Being a real estate agent, I could tell you, and I'm sure no one is surprised, that property values have not been excellent in the past two years. And we need to stand out. And when I look around and I look at these other communities and I say, okay, why are people from out of state and all over Florida moving to, to the area? It's the amenities in one way or another, right? There's not many gathering spaces that exist in the communities near us. Something like this would set us apart. So definitely increased property values there. Events such as music, theater, storytelling, weddings, et cetera, could be held at such a venue. It's a safe and accessible gathering space, well-maintained area for informal and formal activities. Okay, so the, the idea, the concept here is that this structure would, would be there permanently and we could use it for not only formal events that go through the, um, the, the board to, let's say, the high school wanted to do a, a wind ensemble kind of concert, they could do something like that. Or we wanted storytelling on a Saturday morning, right, where local authors can come and we could set them up on stage and families can come and read stories. Just a few ideas there. This project is a step towards creating a more connected, engaging and vibrant community while adding long-term value to the neighborhood. All right? So you could read through the pro, uh, the project vision and goals. All right? Provide a safe, accessible area. So when we're talking about where we're, we're looking to place this, I don't know if you wanna bring up the map from, from before, about the commons area, there's a big chunk of space over by the pool and actually down the incline towards the water area. So we go back there.
I, I don't want to.
You could see this on the images I provided here, also in the slide deck. But if you look at that, the area that kind of butts out into the water, that's all unused space. There's nothing that's designated to go there or exist there, right? The concept of this pavilion is that it would face the pool, so it would face up the hill, which is super important when we're talking about things like sound, right? It's not going to be blasted into any community, it's actually, if you think about an amphitheater kind of setting, right, the back of the, the pavilion would be towards the water and the presentation, whatever was taking place, would face the pool up that mound. So you have a lot of seating and space there where people could sit in front of this pavilion. We're also proposing some pathways to and from, and you'll be able to see that in the sheets that I, that I gave you, that basically would connect the.
The same ones?
Yep, it would, it would connect the part that we're talking about in the back on, on one side and then also to the parking lot and the pool.
And that's what, I was gonna say that I wanted it to pull that back to that, for people that don't know, that is within the design already.
Yep, yep, sorry.
We ran a wider.
That path, there you go.
Yeah, there you go. So you can just point it out, like.
So the path is here, right? The path's already right there.
Park you want there.
Where, where is the pavilion on that picture there?
See, the pavilion would be right here facing this way.
And I think Doug had mentioned concern about the sidewalk, so it wouldn't be a long walk and this would meet that concern, but we just extended the same one.
Be a fully chilly area you have, you gotta watch this, this kind of a design, and I don't know if Paul knows about this, but we got a twenty-foot LME that, that cannot be there, so it's gotta be, the structure's gotta be moved up that hill so you lose that, correct, that distance of property.
It's always an engineer that wants to ruin the park. However, always an engineer wants to ruin the park.
But the fence gotta be built up to.
Just, just the rules.
Now, Ed, but let me mention this, the, the, the concept that we came up with actually has the path going behind it. So, so the path would be behind the pavilion, so you could actually walk around the back of it.
And that's all engineering and design.
Right, that's, exactly.
This is conceptual.
This is just concept, yep.
And you're definitely gonna be big. Sound system.
It's nothing.
The area, I mean, I've been there, the area is huge, so twenty, we'll give it forty in my view.
Exactly, exactly. So just a, a little bit, I know we're gonna have questions, I have space for questions at the end. Um, the, the concept is, if we look down, I have some images also in the slides, but I wanna get to really laying out what this thing will be. It's, um, let me see where it is, medium-sized wood block and stucco structure sitting on a slab, uh, adjacent to the pond, okay? So it's, it's actually under budget in, in the funding sources. So if you keep on going down, there's some images in there, so you can kind of see where the pond is and then what it would look like if you were facing down. So the people in the second image are looking down at the pavilion. So also you'll notice that there are wings on the side of the pavilion to help with sound too, okay? Dave Ruth helped us, uh, he's an architect, he was on the committee, he, he did stuff down recently, but he helped us design this. So again, just concept phase, right? But we put these wings in to, to prevent sound, allow people to still walk on that path behind without being kind of bombarded with the noise. Um, and also, a neat thing is behind those wings, the concept would be to put some kind of closets, right? So we could do some basic storage in there if we wanted to put chairs out or cables because this pavilion, when not in use for a formal event, can definitely, we could set out some chairs and, you know, just provides a little bit of shade if people wanted to go down for lunch. It's part of the, the, the problem that we see over at the pool, right? People wanna spend the day at the pool, but then they're eating at the pool and then the birds are coming and then it's all, it's all like, it's a mess. So this gives them a, a space to go that they can walk to, down to a quieter area when it's not being used for a formal event and it, it makes sense. All right? Little bit more on, on the structure, we're talking about, if you, if you scroll down after the photos, yeah, right there. So new community pavilion was conceived as a simple, medium-sized wood block and stucco structure sitting on a slab, right? Full point two, it's a modern open pavilion that is approximately the size of a basic two thousand square foot Gateway stucco home. So the idea is that we would also construct it to kind of match what we're looking for and, and what our current structures exemplify. The front of the pavilion should allow visitors to sit on a downward sloping lawn, so that's why it's kind of the perfect area, right? Just like an amphitheater, any kind of sound, if it was to be like a musical event, would go right into the, uh, to the lawn in that case. And the front of the design would be sixteen feet high by thirty-four feet wide, the rear would be twelve feet high, so that would be, would basically be sloping like a pergola kind of style and thirty-four feet wide. This, uh, is, when you, when you look at stages, performance stages for theater, for, this is more than enough space for that type of thing. It's also really good when you're thinking about things like weddings, right? You could definitely, you could definitely have a wedding up there, there's more than enough space to, to house something like that, which is really good. Simple pavilion structure landscaping should be added into the twenty-twenty-six Commons Park community budget. This obviously will be pushed to twenty-twenty-seven, we're proposing that it could be considered for that time range. That price is just approximate based on a, a common single-family home, again, two thousand square feet. Will it vary a little bit? Yes. I think that we could do a lot regarding funding this, that it's not directly out of our pockets. I think what we're, since I've been living here, what we are missing is the ability to contribute to these types of things. You know, when we're looking at our parks, communities love to contribute, whether it be in the construction process or whether it be sponsorship, you know, like buy a brick, have your family represented in, in this kind, so there's a whole bunch of things that we can do that I feel like we haven't done when we're looking at something like this. This will create, uh, at the core, a sense of community, right? It, it, they're gonna, people are gonna feel like they own it, um, it's there to use. And I think as far as the community goes, it is something that is available to, to Gateway. So we're talking about, again, putting this behind the fence of commons. So it's not something, uh, that, you know, we, we should have to worry about late at night, people getting in there and, and doing mischievous stuff. The idea is that you would need a key card to get into that entire complex over there. Now, it doesn't mean we're gonna not allow outside people in, right? We, we don't shut the gates for Winterfest, we don't shut the gates for Red, White and Pool, everyone can come. Those are formal events that we would, of course, manage that. That's just about it. Some time for questions, anything I can answer. Again, we're, we're really super early on on this, so I don't know if I can answer anything, but if you have.
I saw a question on the money, that was not Tetra Tech, right? That was you guys.
That was just us, that's not ballpark.
That ballpark is actually very similar to the, what we got from, from them three years ago.
Yeah, that's just us, Bob.
From Homewood.
From Homewood, that's what I was looking at, yeah. It's, it's within the ballpark, I mean, it's not the exact same design or layout, but it gives you an idea, that's what you're looking at, five hundred thousand. All right, I don't have any.
No, no, thanks.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Do you want any action from us for this?
The next item, I'll address seven E. Eric Pulling is here with FPL. So FPL, uh, sorry, Pelican was contemplating, uh, the main thoroughfares through Pelican, Pelican Reserve Boulevard, Second Grove and Pronto, all are district-owned street lighting. P-PAC and the Safety and Security Subcommittee have initiated this project. We reached out to Eric with FPL to provide some pricing and plans, just like we did the conversion of the Greater Gateway side. This presentation went through the Safety and Security Subcommittee, which was recommended to P-PAC for approval. P-PAC is recommending approval of this to the board. I believe they are looking to start this project this fiscal year utilizing their capital reserves. This will get Pelican out of Gateway, out of the street lighting business in Pelican. It'll be all FPL. All of their side streets and neighborhoods are already FPL, it's just these main thoroughfares.
And then we're Bentley Electric and-
So be unified, just like this side, yeah.
And so part of what prompted this was, we received some astronomical quotes for pulling wire because there were long strings of lights that were out. And so what prompted the Safety and Security Subcommittee and P-PAC to question, hey, we need to look at converting this, again, recommended from all of those that I mentioned, staff recommends to support it as well. I believe the tentative timeframe for completing this would be basically a year, Eric, right? Yep. Just like with the district side, there's a contribution to native construction, so it's about 200, I think it's-
265.
250, 163. 50 of that is a deposit, could get it back as long as there's no issues. And looking for your approval on this.
How's it gonna be funded?
They're gonna pay for it from their reserves.
They're unassigned for Pelican.
What's the total, how many lights total?
180 something.
118, isn't it?
Eric Pulling, FPL LED Lighting Solutions. It'd be 112 decorative units and I believe it's-
17.
Yeah, I believe 17 post-top units at the very end of the project.
So total cost of the project?
Less than, the 50, 50,000 of that, 250 is a deposit just for incidentals, so it could be as low as 200,000.
There's a $50,000 contingency that we have-
Yeah, that doesn't buy this project, it's gotta be a lot more than that.
Well-
A billion dollars.
That's just-
So, so this is the upfront, that's the upfront cost for the underground infrastructure that we'd be putting in place? And then same as the existing neighborhood lighting or the lighting that we're installing?
So you're basically going to debt finance the 2, 3, 4 million dollars that it takes-
There's a monthly clause. Exactly, same.
Same as EUA.
That's correct.
You what?
Same as how we did here.
Same as EUA.
Well, these are, I believe, a little bit more expensive than the ones we-
I budgeted, just based on some other municipal contracts, 1.8 million dollars for a light for like. That was my estimate based on existing municipal contracts reviewed.
The biggest difference with this one is Pelican loves their decorative lights. We went standard concrete on our side, they're choosing to build a post-top and decorative to match the existing that's out there. They do recognize that there's something-
Yeah, they're paying for it, that's their call.
That's what they want.
And with the cost that we're facing with all the power branch we have today, I mean, the system's 25 years old, we have to do something, no matter what.
It's kind of, it's actually the same position-
The timing is perfect.
Same position we were and that's why we did it.
So I do have to commend Mr. Ed Hedges because he did take the lead on this, working directly with Eric and working through some of the details of the light fixtures and numbers, et cetera.
I'd like to recognize that as well.
Oh, yeah.
Tremendous help.
Tremendous resource for the community.
Absolutely. So we're looking for your approval.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the speedlight conversion project, we started it.
I'll second your motion. On favor say aye, if you have aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I think they're gonna try and get some money and choose with it. I believe that was the timeframe.
We'll work, we've got to work through the paperwork and then initiate the project and then send the money and then make it get sorted on their side.
All right, so go ahead, Eric. We'll move to prove of minutes. Does anybody have any-
Just one thing before we go on and down, go back to the map, I wanted to make sure I understood, because it wasn't all roads, it was just certain roads in Pelican, this has been done.
Not the town center.
It's just the main, yeah, a border.
I understand the road coming in, obviously, and then the road going out toward Preito and Stoian.
Right.
And it stops right there. But then it goes back down the road across the flowway, paying up, paying up a little bit. Yeah, I didn't, that's one that I didn't understand. What differentiated why it went up some side roads and other side roads it didn't?
So the main thoroughfares are district-owned lightings right now. That Benito one, that little leg right here by the town center, those are not FPL lights right now, and so again, trying to be uniform.
So it's district-owned roads, period?
Correct.
Okay.
So it doesn't go to the town center, it doesn't go to the, those amenities? But it does go all the way down to the plaza.
Yeah, go paying up.
Which is appropriate because the district has-
Yeah, they're built all the way down to the-
So it goes all the way from one end to the other. With none of the feeder roads.
Gotcha.
All right. So let's go ahead and move to prove of minutes, I need a motion for approval of minutes, March 13th, any progress?
That's our move.
I'll motion a second, on favor say aye, if you have aye. So sensitive items, can we have Tetra Tech?
Only thing I had on that was not to pull it or anything, but I find it amazing, those prices were so drastically different. I mean, when you have bids on something like this, it's very well-defined, and you're getting ranges of cost of 10 to 1, what am I missing here? Why is one guy doing it for 184,000 and the other guy wants 1.8 million? What's going on? Did we talk to anybody to find out why this company, I know we talked to the firm and talked to a couple of reps, but man, that unit price seems immensely low.
Steven Agapi is online.
Tetra Tech?
Good afternoon.
Steven, did you wanna take-
They got the speaker set up weird.
Steven, did you wanna take this or you want me to take it?
Hang on.
No, I can-
Hang on.
So-
Usually, usually if you talk to the second and third low bidder when you're off that far, somebody will say something or somebody will do something to give you some hint. Maybe this guy's hungry and he's getting ready to go out of business if he doesn't get the job, I don't know. As I know is that price, that unit price for doing televising is immensely, immensely cheap. That scares me.
Go ahead, Steven.
Good afternoon, everyone, Steven Agapi, Tetra Tech. So we have worked with Atlantic Pipe on multiple projects in the past with other clients and they're a good firm, we have had no problems with them. Yesterday and today, we had bid openings for another client, 4CCTV of Sewer. And the low bidder on the first round a couple of months ago was not the low bidder this time around, they were much higher, and that's just because they can be, they can afford to be higher because they have the work and, you know, if they're gonna win the job, they might as well make it worth it, so they bid it higher. So I think it just comes down to, you know, their people's workload and how badly they want it.
They're not, they're not subbing this out to somebody, are they?
No.
No.
We done know?
No, no.
You said no.
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 No, they're not subbing it.
Okay.
Correct.
So staff supports Tetra Tech's recommendation on 9B and then obviously we're requesting 9A for it.
Well, it's almost crazy to not take the price, I mean, it's a lot of money. You could almost do double the amount of work and you're still, haven't even got to the second low bidder.
Yep.
All right.
Motion to approve.
9A and B.
9A and B.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion in the second, make five, on favor say aye, if you have aye.
Send them a Christmas card.
District junior. I was there anyway. Go ahead, Steven.
All right, this is our task authorization update. First project up is irrigation pump station generator. Contractor today received word from permitting department that their electrical permit was rejected, they have one comment. I reviewed the comment and it appears that all they need to do is include their shop drawing from the generator that they purchased, so we're gonna respond back to them today and hopefully they can get that resubmitted as soon as possible. Irrigation enforcement improvements, we're working through still with HMGP and CDBG for funding. We're gonna be submitting for SRF funding, which will go to SRF in June for the August hearing. Lower Hawthorne well, trades are wrapping up, I know Electrical was out there this week working. Next step would be to finish grading Electrical and then the fence can go in and that project will be wrapped up. Gateway utility storage building, the building has been erected, they were working on electrical improvements. And I know they also have to do landscaping for this also. Gateway admin building, this task item is gonna get removed from the tracking list, it's being replaced by the park TA, so I'm gonna skip that one. Phase two year two, Lake Bank restoration, that's Lakes 127 and 130, Met Towers Lakes, those are complete. We did a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago, all the remaining items on those lakes have been completed, so we're just doing paperwork at this point to wrap those up. FY24 Lakes, this is MRI, they've got Lakes 57, 105, 125, and 128. They're substantially complete with 105, 125, and 128, and they're almost done with 57 and Stony Brook, and they've requested a walkthrough for sometime in the next two weeks, so within the next two weeks, those will get walked and be completed. FY25 Lakes, Lakes 98 and 99, contractor's still got a couple punch list items regarding sod and fences. Met Towers got Lake 109, we did a walkthrough yesterday, he has a punch list, some minor items, everything else looks pretty good out there. He was starting on Lake 94 in Timber Ridge this week with tree removal, and then it'll be full steam ahead to get Lake 94 completed in approximately four to five weeks, which will hopefully be finished before rainy season fully kicks off. That's our goal anyways, is to get that one done. Lake Bank Restoration, HMGP, this is for the 21 remaining lakes. Right now, we're just waiting for the contract between Gateway and the state to be finalized before we start, because this is a reimbursed project, no work can start on that until that contract is finalized, so we're just on the sidelines right now, but we're ready to go. Public work storage building, I, I'm not really sure what's going on with this one right now, I know that we were working on a change order and I think, I'm not sure if that one got finalized yet or not, my apologies. I know Eric had been working on it, and if it's not done, it should be getting pretty close to being turned back around. And Gateway Commons Park and Admin Building, there's a lot going on with this project and I know you're way more familiar with it than I am, Chelsea, so if you don't mind, if you want to give an update on this one, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, so they're starting to move dirt, they submitted their first payout. As of right now, we have a follow-up, we, every two weeks, we have a, all right, once a month, we have a meeting with the contractor and we're moving along.
We're all moving dirt now, we got the-
Oh, yeah.
Are we, are we back, are we bringing in any dirt?
Yes, they are bringing in some dirt.
For fill?
You'll see a lot of clearing, like Claudia alluded to earlier, there's a lot of invasives on that backside, so there's been a lot of clearing, we had to, we had part of the, one of the requirements was getting a vegetation removal permit, so that's completed, we have to get certain inspections done as part of the vegetation removal permit, so there's some paperwork on that side going, but we are making progress.
And I feel that that's what we have come apart, as soon as they saw that vegetation come down, that's gonna be what the concern is gonna be.
Yep.
But regardless, it's something that needed it to be done, the removal of the dirt and the incident, we just didn't do it. Exactly, so regardless, it needed it to be done, we just saved money and not, you know, decided to do it all at this time.
Maybe a good little blurb for Randy, he's doing an update, that we have the opportunity for us to kill birds, two birds with one stone, because that had been an all-in plan to remove evasives for, you know, two years ago, and we decided to wait till it was more cost-effective if we do it in conjunction with the, with the, with the park project. And there is a plan. Yep, or status, yeah.
Yeah, I know Ed has a good relationship with the two president there, so we can reach out to him too, Justin, and just let him know. Okay.
Steven, you done, are there questions?
No, I've got a couple more projects, just a couple of quick ones. FGUA, we're just waiting for a couple of punch list items before we can close that out. CCTV Sewer Contractor, National Water Main Cleaning is supposed to start on the 27th of this month. I believe they're gonna start in Pelican. CCTV Storm, you guys just approved that, so we're gonna schedule a kickoff meeting with the contractor once all the paperwork is finalized. Pelican Lakes, 47 and 40-
Wait, 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 sorry. Since that was approved, Stony Brook, I will be asking that Storm Sewer Contractor to start in Stony Brook because we have had issues there in the past. Okay, sorry, Steven, go ahead.
No problem. Pelican Lakes, 47 and 48, 47 is substantially complete, Brad's waiting for littorals, but I think he is planning on for the water to come up a little bit, so those littorals have a better chance of getting established. And he started moving dirt on Pond 48 last week. Development updates, Arborwood, they're working through their stormwater punch list, Daniels Parkway Apartments. There's been a upsizing and well agreement floating around for comments internally, I know that's in the works. Santa Lou's, Tony's been trying to work with the attorney for Lennar to get them to move, but I haven't, I don't think anything's come of that yet, so. And Garrett FM, they are moving full steam ahead and we have inspectors out there on a regular basis keeping an eye on the utility installation. And that's all I have, Ed, did you have a question for me?
Yeah, but we'll just start with the fable and right off the bat, it sounds like it's gonna be Tony. Santa Lou's is gonna be a pain in my backside. That bank is deteriorating, it's getting worse, and the first time we get a good rain, it's really gonna get bad. People over there are getting very, very, very frustrated, what do we need to do to light a fire under them? Do we need to just call in Lee County and build that route against them? Because they're obviously just snubbing us, they're not doing anything.
We've got, again, it's been frustratingly silent from the standpoint of the council for Lennar, WCI on that one. We've told them many, many times in emails and in conversations that it's not going to get better, it's only getting worse, this is the optimal time to address it. There've been crickets as far as responses back to what have you found out, as far as, I'll call it carving it out, as we talked before from the 558. And, and I will do another follow-up letter strongly, again, reminding them that the cost may be allocated to them, because if their actions are negative, it's results in damage to the district stormwater management system, we would look to them to help reimburse it now, that, whether that changes their mind and gets them moving, I don't know. From a Lee County code enforcement perspective, I guess the only concern I would have is if it's a DO that we have in our name, you know, we'd be turning ourselves in, I mean, that's the concern. Or is it that the site is not in good shape outside of the lake, so that they're non-compliant with any DO or an LDO or amendment? But I'm not sure those pipes they have, are they part of any DO, Steven?
Well, are they compliant? They're not compliant. So why-
The DO was closed out, I do know that. I, I do know that the DO got closed out by Lee County like a long time ago.
Well, I guess the question is if those pipes going from the downsides to the lake or pond were part of the DO, there's a continuing obligation to maintain compliance with the conditions of a DO even after it's closed out. But the only difficulty would be they typically would go after the property owner, in this case, the association.
Well, obviously, the association did not put in the drain inlets, they-
Well, I understand, the question is what Lennar, excuse me, code enforcement usually goes after the property owner or the party that controls the property, and that's the unfortunate aspect of this.
The people over there are immensely, if that's who called in while it goes, the president of the association saying, what the hell is going on? Nothing's happened.
Well, we'll do a stronger letter and outline the, do you have any photographs, Chelsea or Steven?
Oh, yeah.
Of the continued erosion?
Yes.
Okay. Because I like to do a timeline of photographs, and here's when we started communicating with you recently, here's what we warned you about, here's what's going on. And therefore, and give an estimate of how much it's gonna cost.
Tetra Tech investigates it pretty much monthly on any outstanding issues that we have.
And we can ballpark an estimate, Steven, for repairs, activities, we can put that in the letter.
Okay.
It is definitely getting worse. Okay, go on to Pond 109. People are asking me, it looks like this is cleaning up, what's the date of removal of the fencing?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
We want the sod to get established, there's 10-day horizon-
That's what I told them, I thought that's what it was.
We don't want them to start mowing and scalp it and kill it and then-
Yeah, okay. The HOA this morning voted to approve going on ahead and working with the owner on the fence, so we got that, that taken care of. Pond, I don't remember the number, I think it's 25, but Steven up behind Cypress Links, subdivision gate or monument, looks like somebody brought in another truckload of stone. Is that stone to be placed around the bank where they have gaps? Okay, good. And then the last one is, is that when these guys are finishing like they did and they had a contractor, an agreement with the golf doors to use that site, which included the placement of a portage on, and they're done and the grass has been sodded back and it's all done, the portage on is still there. People want that out of there, they asked me about it today. I said, well, I can go hook my golf cart up and drag it down the road, but we're, we're- The issue is-
We'll get it tomorrow.
The contractor needs to have the company come in and get that portage on out of there.
We'll notify them tomorrow.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else for Tetra Tech?
Everyone, I hear, no?
Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Thank you, Steven.
Excuse me.
All right, so go ahead and move to-
So we, we have James with RWA here to present the 60% design of the irrigation system and then also the planting design.
James McCord, I'll do the review for the record.
Should want to touch over the executive summary and then-
So we've moved to 60% completed plans, which for the irrigation system, it's mainly, we've got, we've got the communication system in, we've got the heads and distribution part and the points of connection. When we get to 90%, we'll start actually revolving piping and zoning and doing the final hydraulic calculations. The planting plan, 60%, shows what we, what we're proposing with the staff, we've got a few little things I think we're gonna work out on some different spots and species to make it a little more congruent throughout the corridors, so. So in short, the irrigation system, we're gonna have just a little update too, I'm actually meeting with the baseline representative, Mark, we're just gonna go over the communications, make sure everything looks, looks good, that there's nothing that's gonna be an issue. And we'll see if I can maybe even give them a drive-by and just show them the locations, but being that it's a cellular communications, there shouldn't be any communication issues, but we're gonna make sure that everything is adequate and if we can maybe reduce something, we'll try to reduce something just for, for cost and stuff, so I'm just gonna have a QAQC by the manufacturer themselves. Okay, so we went through, we've got, we're getting, the numbers are showing about this, about the same, maybe a little bit higher, and the reason being is I keep in contact with irrigation contractors and just ask them which way is the market going, and right now, there's been a kind of spike unfortunately because of the tariffs, if you can believe it's even affecting this, because a lot of these products are not manufactured here, but by the way things are trending, it may, this may relieve itself. But they, right now, they're only guaranteeing prices for like 90 days max because of the, because of, because of the uncertainty on that, so. So the price was up just, I think, a little bit from the original, the original order magnitude is just based on square footage without anything designed, this has all, this has all the number of heads, all the number, the miles, the miles of drip, our areas of drip, and, and so this is, it's getting, it's, it's gonna be probably somewhere trending there, we'll do our best to keep costs down as much as possible, we get to the piping, and hopefully PVC prices will eventually drop, but when the oil keeps, oil prices keep coming down too, so.
So this project is a total wipeout of everything on the backside of our mains. So this project is a total wipeout of everything on the backside of our mains. Is that correct?
Yes.
Total wipeout.
Except for the, yeah, except for the distribution system. So from, you'll have mains, but we'll call them sub mains, that there'll be a point of connection which you're meter, the meter on, so everything will be branded.
So everything downstream of a newly placed meter will be new.
Correct, yes, sir.
And that it would be inclusive of heads, drift lines, the whole nine yards.
Everything. You'll have new wiring, you'll have definitely a really upgraded control system than what you've got.
That was gonna be my next question, because I'm having troubles right now on baseline. We put it in after the fact and didn't put in piping.
The wire.
The wiring. The wiring. This one, I'm assuming.
We're putting conduit.
Well, definitely, that's what we learned that one too. If you're gonna put it in conduit, is it gonna get a conduit that's in the trench of where the lines are at? So in other words, this isn't bored separately.
Actually, there, this is gonna be entirely new wiring, new conduit, so everything's gonna be branded.
I understand that, but is it going to follow the path? In other words, we're.
Are you gonna lay it parallel, together?
Is it going to be in with the pipe that's going down the trench, or is it gonna be in a separate trench line?
It's, it's most likely gonna be, typically, I would put it in with the larger mains just because it saves entrenching.
Yeah, but the biggest thing is, is that when we went out and we were boring everything in the community, you've got utilities all over the place.
Yes, sir.
And you're hitting them right and left.
Yes, sir, we're, we're, we're actually put together a set of plans, we're sending that off, we're gonna be doing 811 design tickets. And sending in the utility companies and start coordinating now that we're starting the piping, to give them something, and so we'll get all their information. So all the information that the utility companies have will be on these plans to warn the contractors saying, hey, here, and also assist us in our design to make sure that we're trying to separate. So right now, the only utility information we have is the information we've gotten from staff on the reuse main lines, and we've got a good separation for the conduit from that.
And buried depth, we're gonna be what, 20, 24 inches?
Right now, typically, your main lines are 36 inch cover. And don't go, don't go beyond, so our 36 inch trench, because you go, start getting deeper, you start running into issues, you sure don't wanna go.
You're gonna run into conflicts with other deals.
Well, not just that, if you, once you get to 48 inches, now you got ocean, you gotta get to shore, it's, it's.
I just wanted to make sure, because the minimal amount of exposure we have is, just like with this FPL deal that we had on the Gateway Greens Drive on West Lakes. We were hitting this baseline equipment right and left. And we don't wanna do that again. We don't wanna do that.
Understood, yeah, and that's, and that's one reason why when we originally, I came in, in 30% and said, I think we ought to do conduit, and with the, we all agreed just because of the protection of the, of the cable itself, because being a two hour system, a little, it's milliamp, so a little nick can cause an issue and those things.
They don't wanna do that.
Then the last one is, is the, as I'm reading this, what we have right now budgeted is 2.4, 2.5 million dollars. I'm reading this that we're at 5.2, 5.3 million.
Well, if you look at irrigation, I want about 4.6, but yes, sir.
Well, all in, because if we're gonna put in the irrigation, we're not gonna put in the plantings, what the hell are we doing it for? So basically, this is both of those items deal.
Yes, sir.
What I'm saying is, where's the money coming up? We haven't even had discussion, where's the extra 3 million bucks coming from?
Doug has a question too.
So we did, so we have pursued a grant for over a million dollars that we're waiting to hear back hopefully in the next month or so. The plantings, that is to be determined by the board, they're, I mean, it's not, we're not obligated to put those in right away, as long as we have a plan in place, we can budget that over time. We did try to minimize our, no, plant, plant of attack, plant of tack on additional plantings down Griffin. Thanks, Doug.
Well, that, that's not my Bailey Wigan background, but I've now learned it being on landscape for a while. That looks to me like 600 and some thousand dollars was overkill. Why do we need all of those plantings?
Well, that, that can be supplemental pricing as part of the bid package, or we can do that as part of an entirely separate bid package.
We gotta tighten the belt on some of this stuff, it's getting out of hand, a lot of money going out. Just way beyond what we ever envisioned.
And when we applied for the grant, I believe we applied for, because of the amount that you could apply for and the cost benefit analysis, I believe we had applied for just Griffin. I have to fall back up and look at Nathan's files, but that should help. I don't know that it'll get us to that mark, but this is that 60% design. This is when we start looking at where there are cost savings, is there ways to cut back on certain things? Do we have to do the plantings now? Do we push that, you know, down the road? Those types of things. And, and there's always additional grants that we can look at too.
So a couple of things, I think we'd all agree, the priority is the irrigation system. And so, yeah, that has to be, you know, what we're putting in is quality, it should last for a certain amount of time. We care about meters and what's under the dirt. Our residents probably care more about what they're gonna, what they're gonna see on top. So can you just talk about, just for, you know, literally 30, 45 seconds? Just the philosophy or the methodology around the new technology and, you know, when it comes to sprinkler heads or coverage? And I've always said, I wanna get out of the road spraying business, the road watering business. And a great indicator is if you were to drive down the road maybe a week ago, you could see all the dead spots around Gateway. And you could pinpoint where your, and even in your yards, where your sprinkling system was not hitting certain areas. Yeah, where those gaps are. So if you could just touch base on that, and then one last thing. Do we, do you have an in-house arborist?
I'm a certified arborist.
You're a cert, okay.
Yes, sir.
This one, thank you.
So, Steven? So just to quickly answer your question, so the, the design philosophy, well, one, not only being, a landscape architect allows me to be, to design irrigation systems in the state of Florida. However, I'm a certified IA Irrigation Association designer, contractor and auditor. So that, that, that is a level above minimum competency for the state of Florida. So this means I'm proficient in this. So the big thing that we're gonna be designing and to answer your question is, is the efficiency. And that's where, that's, you can see when, when the failure of a system, especially now times of drought, you're gonna see like exactly what you're talking about. And we're, we, we look at those things, but to answer your question about keeping, keeping like water off the roads, the, the technology. For one thing that we're specking, or one thing that's gonna help a lot, is getting rid of all those heads that are like right next to shrubs and things like that and going to drip. The drip applies the water directly on the, on the ground, it's, it's 95% efficient, so you don't have to water a lot longer to get the same amount of water out for that plant material. So you're, you know, we're gonna see some water savings, but then you're not, what happens is that head, those, those heads grow, those shrubs grow, the heads could pop up, shoot straight into the shrub and then it goes and just, it doesn't, it doesn't, it can't infiltrate the soil, so you see, and that's where you see a lot of runoff. Number, number two is, once we get to scheduling, we'll, we'll look at certain things, certain, certain heads, like sprays, they, they're more, they're more affected by winds. So we'll, we'll go in programming where those things are early in the morning when the wind is less. If it's, because some, some of these can be, have to run, you know, because of wind, watering windows, may have to run, start running a little earlier. We use the rotors, we run the drip during the day, so we can sit there and spread this out, one, not putting a lot of, this will help keep watering when people are actually, you know, putting water on the, the walks and stuff, and people actually using these properties, or these, or these walkways and these amenities. And then the quality of, of technology has gotten so much better. So like the, the spray heads that we're actually specifying right now is, it's, it's a Toro head, which a lot of people, all you hear is Hunter and Rainbird and things like that. But Toro's the only one that has a certain, a certain particular product, it's called, it's called the Explode. So if, say, the guy, when the lawn, the mainscape's out there with their stick edgers and they're edging on beds and they clip a nozzle with the little, with the little weed eater edger, and put a cut in it, if that was a Hunter head or a Rainbird head and it pops up, you got, you got the nice little waterfall, little fountain. Explode stops it off completely, so you're not having this, so if something like a car runs over, breaks off that part, water does not go into the road.
That's fantastic.
How do you know it's broken?
The, the, the riser pops up, but no water comes out. So then it's a visual thing, you would've known. I know a question regarding the drip line.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in the past, like we've had a lot of issues on Griffin, which I think we have the majority of the drip lines on the, on our beds, and they would, like, I guess the squirrels or the, the animals, they're prone to chew into it. Is it the same, like, does a drip line have to be always above ground, or can it be below ground?
It's, it's, it's actually for, for beds, it's typically on top of the ground, but then you have mulch, mulch over it.
Mulch on the top of it.
Yes, sir.
And the other one that we're running, running into right now, that we finally got rid of mainscape and got a new company in, in doing checks, we're finding our drip lines have never been cleaned and never been cleaned out. So they need to have routine locations to where you have a blow off to clean those out, because what we're afraid of is we're going to be putting in all new drip lines, because all our lines are 30 years old planks. And we're not getting water. We know when we go down the road, we'll see a bunch of healthy bushes, and then we'll, where we have drip lines, and then we'll go another 50 yards, they're all dead.
But I don't, yeah, I don't, I mean, if you get 30 years out of your drip line, good, good luck, because that's like with the sun exposure, we're looking like a five, but okay.
Actually, actually, the life of a drip line, if you got 20 years, is a pretty good life.
That's what I was gonna say, I'd say thank you, but I was just, I didn't.
But I mean, irrigation heads are rated 10 years, so I mean, it's, so it's actually typically, it could be double.
We're like on the mountain with the fishes and the bread. We, we can make it last a long time.
To answer your question, even drip lines since 30 years ago, the technology has really increased. They use copper and things like that, which keeps, keeps stuff from clogging, so it keeps bacteria and things from growing in there, which starts, starts doing, you can't really flush out a drip line, however, they may not expect this in every, every drip line. We do actually have design, we have design on there, or there's flush valves, so when the system does start up, it flushes, flushes the line first.
Well, that was gonna be my question here, is, is do, are we checking, when we do the wet checks, are we checking these drip lines? Because I found out we're not.
Yeah, it's very.
It's been, it's a nightmare.
That would be, that would be a maintenance issue.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, but I don't know if they still, I'll have to get in touch with Netopim, because I haven't seen it in their catalog, but they do make, it's called a little flag, so once that drip line goes on and it's working properly, there's a little flag pops up to let you know it's working and if there's no breaks. And that's about, because it, because it's a drip pressure.
That's one that's very expensive.
No, they're not very, they're not very expensive, they're, they're very, they're very expensive, but I don't think, I don't know if people bought enough of them for them to keep manufacturing, but at least.
Your, your issue when you do a wet check, you can go out and you can see heads, you can see rotors and all that. You can't tell whether a drip line's working, especially if it's buried.
Now, now, now you, now you're gonna be able with the, with the clock. The baseline clock is gonna sit there and, we're gonna have, it's gonna measure the flow.
It's gonna run, yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna, they're gonna be able with their iPhones or out there, and they're gonna sit there and say, hey, you know, it's only running 30 gallons per minute and it was designed at 45, there's, there's an issue.
But where's that 30 gallon minute going? That's the issue. If you've got clogs and things like that.
Well, it's zoned, so it's gonna be zoned, so it's not gonna be like a one somewhere to be located.
But you can actually see, it's funny, you'll actually see, you'd be surprised, you turn that drip on, if it doesn't have mulch on top, you can actually see the water coming out of it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But, so, and, and final, back to the, the, the big thing that you're gonna see with this system is the communications. You're gonna be able to know when problems happen. It's gonna automatically shut it off. So like if there is a break and it exceeds flowed, it's gonna actually say, listen, we're gonna shut that zone off and stop, so you're not gonna have that extra water in, because you know, it's running at 2 o'clock in the morning, you don't have anybody out there to fix it, and you don't know, and then you got the roads flooded. So this'll help, it'll, it'll give warnings. The staff will be able to sit there and go through errors and say, hey, I got a problem at zone 36C. They go out there and they say, oh, we got a main line break there, or sub main break, or we got, there's problems with the heads, and so they'll know how much water's flowed, if it flowed. And then also on this system, one thing good about baseline is if you follow their, the ASIC grounding, they'll give you 10 year warranty, including lightning strikes, which nobody does, because we're, you know, we're number one non-lightning strike, I think, area in the world. I know it's in the US, but I think it's in the world even. So that, that is not uncommon. My, when I designed Gulf Coast Town Center, we had a lightning strike and blew out the whole entire front control panel of the, of the clock. So this is not uncommon, so you got 10 years with it, and everybody, you're lucky to get a year warranty on a controller. But that being said, you're gonna have all the information you need, it's gonna, it's gonna sit there and just monitor it, you'll be able, the crews will be able to run it with their iPhone, do the wet checks, it's gonna be faster. Another good thing about like the Toro heads, they can actually, because of that technology, they can actually not have to turn the system off, they can walk through, take the nozzle off, swap nozzles, clog nozzles and keep going down there, because it automatically shuts.
As you do the wet.
As you do the wet.
That's exactly what we are telling.
We did have witches up there shutting it off, doing the repair, and then a week later, like Chelsea, and they forgot to clear it off, because there was one little area and now it's like a whole zone.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to go and flag, flag up because of the nozzle's clogged or.
We're not doing that flag, like, a little more, we're gonna have a crew, this is the fixer crew, following the wet check crew.
I wanna just add one final thing. As we're going through this design, we're thinking long-term, we're thinking protecting, you know, our investment, how do we do this in the future? Especially, you know, having other utility companies come in, you know, they call in the 811 ticket, but right now, that 811 ticket goes to utilities. We're already talking internally about, okay, when those tickets come in, how, we need to notify Angelo, our tech, because he's gonna be learning through this process, he'll be the one to go out, we'll have, the contractor will be responsible, or your company is responsible for providing the asphalt and in a GIS system that we will be able to implement in non-cardograph that, so when those tickets come in, not only do the utility staff go out to do the mains of irrigation and water and sewer, our staff can go out and identify where all of this conduit is. That way, if it does get hit, we've marked it, we've noted it.
And, and, and to add to that point, when I ran Call Your County's 120 mile irrigation system, we actually coordinated with Sunshine 811 and said, we're a provider, so when they would, when they would call for the 811 tickets, they'd actually call, Call Your County Irrigation, and we had a guy and locate it. Now, when, when we go in, when they're building this, every, every change of direction, every asset, which you know.
On the asphalt.
Is gonna be GPS location, and they'll be on the asphalt, and the good part about it is too, cardograph can be used on the phone, so not only can they, they can be turning on and off the system, they can sit there and pull up all the asset information right there too.
Our problem is right now is we've got errors in the GI, in the GPS system.
Yes, sir.
And so consequently, you sit there, and the other day, we were doing an instantaneous wet check up on Wallon Lakes where we put in two new meters. We had to go through, we found zone 40 and it was in an area. We said, okay, the next line down is either gonna be logically 41 or 39. It was 37. There were no rhyme or reason to it, so you've gotta have accurate asphalt, so not only show where it's at, but show what it's controlling.
You're gonna, they're gonna, we're gonna have each zone area, it's gonna be in cardograph, so when you pull up to zone 37, you'll see the extent of the zone. There won't be every little head on the card graph, but it'll have the assets like the valves and all that kinda stuff.
The big one is to have the start and the finish.
Yep, yes, sir.
Is there any other questions for James?
And just one little thing about the, the budget too. This is, this is gonna probably take a little bit longer than a year, so this gives you the opportunity to maybe get multiple grants too as well.
Oh, good.
So I was talking, I was kinda talking to a few different people and just kinda saying, hey, if I had a system that was this many heads and this, this, how long do you think it would take? And I said, I'm thinking, right now, I'm thinking about a year or so, but there will be MOT required and all these, I gave them kinda just the, didn't give them the where and when or why or how, I just was trying.
Are you talking about the grant that we tried to get over gateway?
That's one of them.
Yeah, but we, we qualified for the grant. Problem was, they ran out of money before they got us.
Well, I, I, yeah, I'll tell you something though. I know a lot of your municipalities are not going for grants. They don't, I mean, a lot of them just don't. With the, Call Your County gets so many of them because no, there's no competition hardly. They just don't wanna go through the paperwork.
Paperwork, it's paperwork.
It's sad to say.
We do paperwork.
We do a lot of paperwork here.
We do.
So, so I'll be, I'll be working with staff and what you'll have is a really good design system, and if it's gotta be something phased, you, you, you got the plans. You know, it could be, you know, because there's still some, there's some parts out there that are relatively new, that aren't as old as some of the other parts and we can sit there and hit the, you know, the critical areas. And I've already told Chelsea and staff that we're gonna really, we're gonna break this down based on each water point of connection. So you can sit there and do phase by water connection.
Chelsea, is that grant money available for Pelican Irrigation?
Absolutely. Yep. And I, I made note of that. I mentioned that to the Landscape Subcommittee last time because I know the system over there is getting pretty old. It normally opens in like April, May timeframe. So we're gonna look for that next year for Pelican.
Because right now, the community is by mutual agreement, jointly. So I wanna make sure that they're totally aware of everything.
That's about fifty percent. That's what we, we applied for.
And totally off the subject, if you do need some assistance with pickleball courts, I designed them and the lighting and I've had a lot of knowledge about all the noise and the barriers and stuff. Because if you do go the barrier, the noise attenuation barrier, you have to increase the structural components of your fencing.
Yep.
It's a, it's a park.
It's far.
It's a park.
And, and just to let you know, fifty-three, fifty-three decibels like the audiologist's talking about, if you've ever heard like the really quiet, quiet dishwashers that you can't hear, like mine has to show a light on the ground.
Same here, right? The people.
Those are about fifty-one. So actually that sixty, sixty decibels is a normal conversation. So he's talking to me fifty-three decibels. That's lower than, less than a conversation, hearing a conversation about fifteen people.
It's for, for one, it's, it's, there's no way.
Yeah, so there, so there, so there are some things, but there, there is some information out there. There are also people out there and I can look into it a little bit for you, but there are people who do the, the noise studies and modeling. There's actually people that get paid to model noise for pickleball courts.
We had that when they complained about the dog. We had dogs barking there, so they're good.
Sure.
Yes.
All right. So James has finished sixty percent. So we're looking for your blessing for him to move towards ninety percent and he'll bring that back to you whenever that's.
I assume.
So that motion, a second?
Second.
A second on, did you say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. I'll be in touch.
Have a great day.
All right, let's go ahead and move to Town Lakes Drive first.
Hi.
Is it Tony or is it you?
Tony.
Well, we've been doing some initial digging. I got tied up in a number of other projects going way back to shit alcohol. So seven, or eight, or nine, okay.
Excuse me, do we approve A and B both?
Yes.
Yes, right. And just trying to find out what happened and why. Again, there were some, at some point in time, WCI offered to convey a quick claim deed. There were some, my recollection is I've not gone, I've not found all the minutes and agendas yet. My recollection was, the discussion was, if you bring it up to speed, we just accepted that was back in eighteen or so. There's a title report from back then also is attached to one of the randoms that reflects that Weston House of WCI Communities was the owner. Now, there's another indication, I think Leep or others indicate, that Town Lakes Office Park is the owner of those roads. And so it, in the extent that the board wishes to take ownership of that roadway segment, if another title report is ordered and if it reflects that Town Lakes Properties Association is the owner, there is at least one surviving officer at the time of dissolution, Vince Sardo.
Okay, so he can keep, so we can work with him and complain and take it over?
Yes, if, if in fact, that's what the title report shows. So if you want me to, I can order the report.
Well, we, we have a quick claim deed that, that he signed in December of two thousand and seven. The issue was, it got dropped here at the, at the CDD. It never, never went through. Whether or not it was correct or it was, had merit, I don't know. But the issue is, is that they, the people that were involved at Town Lakes, have since two thousand and seven, thought we owned this road.
Well, getting back to that, there's, I haven't, I guess I haven't retrieved all my emails and documents from back then. There was an email I sent where I referenced some defects I saw in the quick claim deed. And then, no, I didn't find anything more after that. It was like oh nine, two thousand and ten timeframe. So if it's the board's pleasure.
So you're looking for direction from us to see?
You order the title report, and then if the board wants to say, you know, ask for the quick claim deed, once we get the title report from Town Lakes, we can do that.
You can reach out to Vince and then do it.
Yes, and then the other question becomes, does the board want to have anybody bringing up the speed or just take it and they'll be responsible for bringing up the standards? Whether it's milling, repaying.
Well, that's, so for, for purposes of, from a staff perspective, we have a Town Lakes Fund, we have money in the fund, about a hundred thousand. We've been charging the, the four monument maintenances to it. Part of this was the budget for next year. Do we need to put money in for these assets? Or do we use carry forward? Or is there an option C that the board wishes to accept them and tie them into the general fund, oh one?
Be cleaner, right?
Whichever, whichever you guys choose, but for us, it's more the budget because that's time sensitive. How do we wanna address this? And really, the underlying question is, was, is it ours or not? And I think Tony's gonna do some title work. Well, once that's determined.
So, so if Tony does the title work and if it's not our, can you utilize the hundred thousand dollars to bring it up to?
For our ingress and egress?
Yeah, on the plat, the district has various easement dedication, including for ingress, egress over this roadway track. And so it's probably conceived, the district would have regress, negress rights over the roadway track to access its facility. So the district does have the right to extend money, expend monies to improve ingress, egress, which is the road.
The, the issue, in my opinion, is not so much the road. I agree with Tony on what he's saying on that. My issue is to explain to everybody else in the community, why are we taking over their monuments when we don't do anybody else's monuments? So those monuments should stay with them, and if they don't want it, we just tear them all out.
The monuments, it's not the monuments.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, are the monuments in the roadway track right away or are they outside?
They're their own. They are.
They are separately indicated.
They are, they are their own because I remember two years ago, having the conversation about the annuals because I didn't want that money, annuals money coming out of the general fund. And we did some research at that time, and, and that, we started them charging, I think Brian Rochier was, was who we had at that point. So if they don't want the monuments, then.
Well, that's my deal, was I see absolutely no advantage whatsoever for the CDD being involved in monument maintenance. The road is a whole liberal issue.
Okay, I'll, I'll, sorry, take them out then?
I'm sorry?
Take them out?
We wouldn't touch them.
We don't touch them.
We just tell them, they'll just fall apart because we're not paying for them anymore.
If you're outside, you're right away.
It could be argumentative, could be argumentative that some of the money that we have been, they have been putting into that fund, what we might do is just tell them, hey, we'll, we'll, we'll do this. We'll fix the road, we'll, what do we call it, resurface the road.
Right.
We'll do the striping, we'll do any necessary signs, we'll fix the monuments, and then they're yours. We're not touching the monuments ever again.
Do they, do they car fixing right now?
Use that.
No.
Is that a bad shit?
I mean, no.
No, no. But my point is, is that the last thing we need to do is be taking over monuments.
Well, all I'm looking for is no end to guilt.
Yeah.
Be real clear about what we're gonna do. Like you said, we'll do the road, and we're done.
We're done.
I agree with that, yeah.
Now, is that consistent with the two thousand and seven quick claim deed?
I don't know.
The quick claim deed passed the road and the monuments.
Both, no.
But it never came to fruition. So now the latest update would be.
Some, some why, because we've been, we've been doing, as I understand, the monuments. So why we took those over when we didn't have them to take over is beyond me to begin with.
So can I?
This, this is a, this whole thing is a mess.
But if we, like, go ahead.
Here's my suggestion, because right now, Laura brought up a great point. The Fairway Lakes Monument that's in the little median, we don't touch that. We don't maintain that. Nobody does. If you took the monuments, if you wanted to remove them, you could. But if you stop maintaining them and then they start to look not like the rest of the gateway standard, nobody's gonna do anything.
That's right.
And I'm, and I'm telling, they don't do anything because for a while.
No, we've been doing.
We've been doing it because they just refused to do it, then going back five, six years ago.
You could remove them.
So I'm, I'm up for removing their three, I think, the.
Four.
Four. Well, let, 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 let those thirteen owners, let those thirteen owners decide that they want to individually take it over and have their own little fund and they take care of it. I don't care.
Well, but I think ultimately, what, what we're saying is, yes, in, in an ideal world, they, they would take here, take those minds. But we know what's gonna happen. They might even say, oh, yeah, well, we'll take, we'll take care of. And then in three years, they'll look like crap, and then, then we've got complaints that our monuments look like crap. Why aren't we taking care of it?
And that's when they're gone.
Yeah.
But they won't be able to.
I think the decision is, do we just take them?
I just.
And then we can make the determination, either we, we upkeep or we destroy, remove, remove.
We do that too.
Yes, Tony.
I would much rather do that.
Are we talking Town Lakes Town or Fairway Lakes?
Town.
Town.
Okay, and Town Lakes, consistent with what Chelsea mentioned, there are, there are two separate landscape signagements. And they're outside the roadway track, and they were dedicated to the association track. So we don't have any right to really touch them and take them down.
No, I think you did to us.
They can, what they can do is, they can, since it's part of a larger track, what they would need to do is assign the dedication. Because it's, the easement is on a larger track, and if you proclaim it to us, we'd have to get the meets and balance prescriptions of that easement, which we might be able to do, but we can assign the dedication of that easement to us. That might be the issue.
So a quick claim deed and an assignment of dedication.
And I think then he can work with Vince.
And then we would have full, full control.
Right of the.
Road and sign.
Road and signs, yes, mine has.
Then.
Or, or if we can get an easy meets and balance legal. Of the signing. We always have an ore. We like what you first said. No, I know, we, if we get it, it's cleaner if you have a meets and balance and sketch of the signage. But if we can get something off of the plat, that's something we can get pretty quickly, then that's the issue. Okay, so I have, I have direction for the board or the title work.
Yes.
On the roadway track and to also work on quick claim deed and bring it back to the board.
I know I'm jumping ahead, well, I guess let's pause there and get direction from the board.
So you need me now?
Yeah, that's, I think that's the, the direction.
That's the direction.
I still need to do that. I'll make that motion.
A second.
Suspicion. All papers aye.
Aye.
The second part of this is, I go back to the budget. So we've put, although an nominal amount, we have put money in that budget. So we can choose to use carry forward, not put any money in the budget.
Well, when we say we put money in them, it's the community people put money in the budget.
They were assessed. So there's about a hundred thousand dollars. I drove that, I drove it the other day. The road isn't me milled and repaved, in my opinion, but I'm not a traffic, I'm not, you know, an asphalt person. There's some valley gutters, there's some landscaping that needs to be trimmed, the monuments need to touch up. There's, there's landscape trees overhanging the roadway that do not meet MTC standards. So those types of minor things. But do I think we could utilize the hundred thousand? Absolutely.
Well, the thing is, is that if we're gonna get rid of that, it, it isn't sort of like Stony Brook, we gotta get rid of that hundred thousand, period. And if we're gonna do it and we're gonna buy it, the last thing I wanna do is be talking about Town Lakes roads ten years from now. Let's go in and resurface them right now, re-stripe them, put the signs in, get it all done, and then we set back for twenty-five years.
Right.
Throw a hundred thousand down to zero.
And take it down to zero.
Do whatever you can for that amount, and then we just absorb it and for future.
Okay, so we'll work through the paperwork. If we can get those two things signed over to the district, we can make all of those things down.
Yeah, the one question is, are we, if we do that, we get ownership of roads and monuments, are we saying, let's bring the monuments refreshed? Or do we make the decision of whether we're?
I think, I think.
Concur that until we get.
I think first what we need to do is have somebody build it or tech to look at it closely, make sure there's no structural damage or anything like that. Make sure what we're getting.
So we, we'll split that in roads and in monuments.
Once, once Town Lakes out of it from a decision at Key Point, they gave all the talk, then we can decide level of monuments or do whatever.
Ninety, ninety thousand dollars is a long way on resurfacing that road. It's not that long.
No, it's not much worth it. I don't know how much we can get from that.
The, the thing is, I haven't looked at curving to see if there has to be curve.
There's a couple valley gutters that need to be repaved, that are cracked.
But at least this is a start to get rid of that thing. Because that, those people are, they don't even know they're paying into this down there. They don't even know it. They thought this thing was over with.
What, what's the, the annual assessment, more or less?
About eight thousand, nine thousand.
Well, that's how you only get to the budget that's on there.
Okay, so instead of being a hundred?
It's not, it's like less than ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's still a hundred thousand, it's a hundred and eight thousand.
Yeah. Okay.
Moving right along.
So, Tony, are you clear?
I'm fine, absolutely.
Okay, all right, I'm good too. Thank you for this. It helps. All right, Miss Laura.
Next.
Capital. First is capital. I didn't know if you wanna go category by category. We've kinda touched over these. Nothing's really changed on our side, other than maybe moving something that was capital into operations because that, it didn't make sense.
You did, you got some coatings on here, red and yellow and green and purple and orange and all that. When you do this, what does all that mean?
The red was updated.
Red is an update?
Now, since the last time you said, I just didn't go in and change it. That was.
What does the yellow mean? Is that a new item?
Uh, it's just something I need to look at. There's a note here to potentially split that cost of public works when we get to that point, so.
So it's a note?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a, just call up for the note.
I didn't have any questions on what, what you were doing.
You guys have anything for utilities? And Laura put in the totals for you by, by thumbing source.
And the date and the version. Thank you.
Everything says version one.
That's because that's what it is.
You'll get version.
But if you revise it today.
It's three, really. But thank you.
Nothing for utilities yet. Anything else for utilities moving along? Maybe six-thirty we'll be down here. Public Works?
Nothing.
I noticed you introduced the.
How about, how about, does anybody have any notes into the two items? We just go like, do you have anything?
Yeah, the only thing I noticed is that you now had the silos and you're starting to distribute it.
Yes, and we'll, we'll get into that, yep.
Okay.
Okay, do you have anything?
I just have anything for capital.
No, she has anything for capital at all. Okay.
All right.
And Russ is online. I shot him a text, but he's, he's online for this version. I'm gonna actually swap out because what's in your board book, Steven and Russ and I have been meeting since this was published. So this, the stacking hasn't changed, but the budget, the guts of the budget itself have changed since this was put all up.
Because it's a living, breathing document.
Yes, and as I disclosed the last time, so, uh, let me get in here. I think.
What is printed? What is printed?
Oh, I can pass it to her. I think this.
Just to this, the packet of yours.
No, that's mine. I just. So what I'm, this giant thing that you're getting, Russ, I'm handing out the silos tab to them. I got it from my.
Does it say version two?
It says version one because that's what it is.
It's a proposed version.
Version one was last week.
Page numbers.
It even has page numbers on it. So what you have in front of you is, is, let me see, it's this.
This is version one.
It's this, this tab right here. So the, the, the thing you have laying in front of you, if you were to go to, I'll pull this up here, this allocations tab. I mean, this is bigger.
It doesn't even have notes.
Sorry. No, there aren't any notes. All the notes are in the budget.
Okay.
Um, so the reason that it's, it didn't, I couldn't get the combined to fit on the page. So there's like Pelican and Gateway and then the, the shared stuff. So if you flip back to page, it's at the back here.
For once, I prefer this to the whole one.
Uh, eleven. No, sorry. Is that not eleven? Well, I was gonna start with the common.
Huh?
It's how you state the rewards.
Yes.
It was like.
I thought in this.
But focus on the handout because it's the silos. It ties back to the budget.
And what page are we still on?
So this giant thing, go to page eight. Okay, so if you notice page eight, under the FY twenty-six budget, and if you take a quick peek at your screen here, this column Y that I had highlighted, all of the costs that are under the FY twenty-six budget align with that column. So this, this is the shared administrative costs. I just kinda wanna explain like where the numbers are coming from into the silo. And I did update, and I can't see it right now. I did update these now to show admin shared, or before I just said admin, because there's Gateway admin, Pelican admin and shared admin. So I have this admin shared under the silos column, which does not reflect in the stuff you have in the board packet. So that, this is what I've been working on the last couple days.
Why is it titled enterprise on the screen?
Because this won't show anywhere. This is the enterprise funds share of the allocated expenses. They've always been sharing this.
I understand that, but on the, the handout you just gave us has it titled admin.
Yep, because we don't, the enterprise fund doesn't, isn't part of the assessment, but I just wanted to show that they were getting their fifty percent of the costs.
But it is enterprise.
It is enterprise, yeah. So we're, we're concentrating in this column here, the, the general fund and Pelican preserve share. That's, that's what translates over to this common costs area, um, starting on page eight. So all those administrative and operational admin, that's all of these costs here. So that's, that's what those are. So. Um, I don't think, would you like one? Would you guys like one? The only, let's see, there's, oh, and then the, if you go to page eleven. The, those are the parking rack costs, which we're also sharing. So page eleven, all of those align, again, if you were to go to the actual budget itself.
Okay, scroll this up to where these two matter.
They're right here.
Okay.
Right here.
Yep. So all of those costs are carried over. The one exception that you'll see on here, if you scroll down about a little over halfway down in the page, the holiday lighting and decorations.
Fifteen thousand.
The fifteen thousand, that is for the, that's for the stuff in the community in general.
Is that on page eleven?
The lights, yep, eleven. That's for the lights on Gateway and Griffin. And there's a little note at the top above the thing. It says what, what it's for.
Oh, it's on the top, but it's not one of the left-hand columns.
It is.
Oh, holiday lighting and dark.
Yep, you can see that fifteen thousand hanging out there all by itself. And then if you go up to the top above the word administration, it says lights on Gateway and Griffin. So that's what that's for.
Okay, she's, she's gonna scroll up.
I'll do that. So I will, it's right, it's this right here.
Here, it's right there. Okay, gotcha.
So the reason, the reason we did it this way, and this is what I want to bring up, this is discussion, the board can change this. But I'll just explain the logic behind how it got to that area, is that instead of being in roads, is those are the lights in the main areas. And the reason it was treated differently than Pelican is because Pelican's lights are inside their. And the reason it was treated differently than Pelican is because Pelican's lights are inside their gate. These are out in the community, on the roads, and anybody can drive anytime in the day or night, and there's traffic coming and going constantly. So that's why we have that as a shared cost between Pelican and Gateway versus Gateways, or in Pelican's holiday lighting, which is only inside of Pelican, is being charged only to Pelican. So that's the reason why this is a shared cost.
And Pelican lights also go to all of our monuments, all thirty-nine monuments.
Correct, but you're, the lighting was charged only to Pelican, because the lighting is only in Pelican.
Right.
Where this is Gateway proper.
Proper.
Yeah, with the country, it's everything, oh, yes.
And we have more, more roads.
We did separate out the cost of the lights that go just to the Sherman soccer field for the winter fest, where we have the big tree, and they do all the extra lighting over in there. That's actually, um, that actually is under, so it's, it's under the holiday events, so, yeah. Because that's part of that.
Yeah.
So we did, we did pull that piece out. But that, I just wanted to explain the logic to why Pelican's paying for, they're all in holiday lighting, but we split out the Gateway side.
So if you were to explain this bigger sheet and how?
Yep, that's, I kind of did, we weren't in here.
Oh.
So, that's how we're going through it the way we are. I'm tabbing them, looking at the sheet, and then looking at the budget to see where the numbers are coming from. Alright, so that, that's the, that's the majority, oh, oh, the pool is in there too, so it's cool, it's part of Parks and Rec, so that's also in this silo, so those numbers all transfer over. So if you wanna, uh, you can go back, and then it would start on page, bottom of page two, I guess.
Landscape?
Yes.
So do you guys wanna go through fund by fund, or do you wanna do it with capital?
Yeah, we're just asking if anybody has any feedback.
So I just kind of wanted to give you an idea, if you're, if you're looking at the budget, and then you're looking at your silo sheet, this is where it comes from. So any changes that we make to the budget automatically feed through this entire workbook. It'll update the silo sheet, it updates the allocations, and it updates the assessments all at once.
The biggest, the biggest question that we have for you right now, you'll notice, it's, so the capital projects and equipment sheet, that ties to the capital sheet that you just discussed. The capital projects reserves, we need your input. Now Laura did some homework, if you wanna share from, you guys directed us to go back and look at the capital reserve study. I will tell you, if we follow that capital reserve study, we'd all have a core net.
It was supposed to be one point two million dollars for this fiscal year. So we did not, I did not do that. What I did is, since we've already included the cost of capital projects that we planned to do for fiscal twenty-six, and they're, each can, each section has their own, like for example, for, where am I now? Uh, this is under waterway stuff for ponds, so they have thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars scheduled of capital projects for fiscal twenty-six. So to come up with my amount for the reserves, I took the five years from twenty-seven through thirty-one, and took the average of the capital projects that we had planned for the next five years, and that, and for this particular one, it's twelve thousand two hundred dollars.
Hundred percent of that average.
It's a hundred percent of the average, yes. So, so for the next five years, yep, and that, that would cover, so, but...
So let's, last year, we looked at that capital reserve study, and you all said...
I set them out, right?
I set them out, and, and that was broken out in the silos behind the scenes. Now we're bringing that to forefront transparency purposes. Now, you guys chose not to, last year, follow that capital reserve study. Again, that one point two million, I did not think that we would be there, but that is the number, if you wanna put one point two million in through the different categories. Laura, we went back...
I can, I've been able to parse it out based on what they calculated, to figure out what goes into roads, what goes into the waterway, but it is one point two million dollars.
But it is a five-year average, hundred percent.
No, the one point two is for one year.
One year, okay.
So what, what we did differently, what Laura was explaining, we have, you don't see it, but we have a ten-year CIP that staff put together of all of the things that we anticipate. We only focus on the next five years, because that's realistic. So she took the average of what we foresee in the next five years of those projects, how much we need, and so it's a...
And it's one point two, but, yeah.
And I think what we said...
No.
No. I took, I took the next five years from twenty, starting with fiscal twenty-seven.
Should, should the CIP, let's do that.
Uh, okay, we'll show it, wait on...
That's okay, but I'll give a picture.
This one, it's probably, okay, so...
Waterways, waterways is, you're gonna need to pull back.
But it's not gonna work, because it's not in there, it's, it's this right here. So, um, because there's another year out here, I used thirty-one, this only goes through twenty-thirty, so I add, I, I did five years starting with fiscal twenty-seven, so there's one more year over here that's not included in that. But if you look, this thirty thousand dollars aligns with the capital projects that I put in for fiscal twenty-six. So I took all of these projects that we had planned coming up for waterway, which is not much, it's only, it was sixty-one thousand, plus I think there might have been, there was something over here for thirty-one. And the average for those five years was twelve thousand dollars. So that's how I came up with it.
But this is subject, you guys can pick a percentage, you can pick a flat number, you can do whatever you want, but this was the logical suggestion.
It was the easiest.
I think what we said was, I, in a perfect world, we would fund a hundred percent through reserves. However, because we haven't been doing that, that number becomes quite big. So I think we tried to set a goal of fifty percent.
Not twenty-five or fifty?
No, it's a lesser number.
Yeah, twenty-five, what, and then, and then at the point of...
Three years.
At the point of, whenever that maturity hits, we should have, whether it's thirty-five or fifty percent, and the rest, we could do debt financing, which would be, so it, it's almost like, people that linger now are paying for, you know, future, but the people that will be there at that particular time, they're gonna pay for the other half. So it balances the, uh...
Sure, so we're not paying, so we're not paying for any of the other ones.
If we do it this way, we'll find your average...
Unless we wanted to...
We're balancing.
Unless we wanted to create...
We're balancing the equity in the fund.
One of the other significant differences, looking at page three and fourteen, because you see that thirty-eight thousand, we use that as a, as a target. That's only over here. If you look over the right-hand column, the Pelican reserve and pond back improvement, which is a capital improvement, they got six hundred thousand. But we chose over there, they have chosen, to keep it all in their O and N. They fund everything, rather than going out for God, so that's one of the differences.
Because you have the validity to that, because you started way ahead of us.
I understand.
And which is that right?
But, but there's a difference in that, what makes sure it's the right...
But that's why when you look at the...
When you look at the capital page, it says, there's no capital in Pelican.
But there is, just a little bit.
But we do it, and the O and N, we do it as we go along.
So with Laura's math, math...
I would say, if we go using the five years, you're basically funding twenty percent of the projects that you're expecting to do in the next five years.
So, or you can choose to do a percentage, twenty-five percent of the one point two from your capital reserve study.
Yep, I just need to know what you, how you want to handle it.
What's the cheapest thing to impact our own one?
The twenty percent of...
That's where I'm gonna come down on it. We're already hitting a significant increase.
Yeah, that's...
And the enterprise one.
Just, just as long as we know that we go that route, we're gonna have to generate revenue sometime later on down the road.
Sooner or later, you're gonna pay.
You're gonna pay.
Because you're gonna run out.
Yep. I agree.
Alright, okay, so use the five, the, the average of the next, the five next years, okay? Alright, I will plug those in, it's gonna take a little work, I'll have to work with Russ and Steven to get those numbers plugged in, because it changes something. Alright, any other questions on the budget though? That was the only, the only thing that I needed input from you on, poor guy. That was the only thing that I needed input from you on, shoot thing.
Do you have a ham sandwich in that bag?
Bob needs his sugar.
Is there any other questions?
And as you're going through these, if you have any questions, when you look at the silos and how the things kind of, please call me, or email me, or whatever, and I'm more than happy to walk through it.
Any other questions regarding Bob?
When Laura went over this today, it is very clear in my head, I understood it all, until I got home.
It all makes sense.
Don't go home.
It is much easier to decipher than the...
On that basis, get go, get going, because it's all that it takes in mind.
So do you guys have any other questions about the budget as a whole?
Alright.
So, I, one final thing about the Town Lakes, uh, depending on how, how quick we can get, uh, some, this, this title stuff, and we can get this paperwork done.
Couple of minutes meeting, we'll get an idea of what?
We, we need to make a determination about...
Whether we status quo?
For high, for high water.
Correct. It was seventy-three hundred dollars this year.
Is this our official high watered out, with the exception of what?
No, because I have to plug in those, that reserve, that's not in there.
Okay, other than that.
And maybe Town Lakes.
And maybe Town Lakes, yes.
Okay, so...
It's very close.
Can we go out and have someone just do an analysis to make sure we're that ninety or a hundred thousand dollars?
We already are.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Alright, nothing else for, uh, me?
Is Carol online, Little Slade?
No, she's not.
She's very...
Alright, alright, Russ, I guess you're free to go, have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, are you ready to move to...
Monthly reports?
Yep, uh, just one thing, um, before I turn it over to Laura for the admin monthly report. Uh, the audit RFP is due, I believe tomorrow. You, as a board, will turn your hat and be the audit selection committee, uh, that's per, it's requirement per statute. Uh, so that will not be at the next meeting, we're gonna push that to the second meeting in June. We will get you all of that, all of the bids and all of the information well in advance of the meeting, as well as selection criteria. And if you have any questions, you can contact myself or Rand.
This is for employing our auditor.
Yes.
Those people that always miss their target date for telling us that we're done.
Yeah, we, they didn't miss it this year.
I'm still trying to get my twenty-twenty-three audit on my Angel Lake, they forgot us.
The twenty-twenty-three?
Twenty-twenty-three, they forgot us.
Hi, Bill.
Hi.
Alright, anything for Laura for admin monthly report?
Admin.
When will we see Rev Two? When are we gonna work on this again, and we'll be seeing the next iteration?
She's gonna work on it tomorrow.
You're not gonna see it tomorrow. You will see it no later than one week before the June fifth meeting.
Okay.
It could be sooner, but it's a living, breathing document, and I wanna make sure that all the Ts are crossed and all of the Is are bad before you guys get it on.
And Russ and Steven have to do some double trips as well.
Yes, I, we need, he and the three of us will be working together, yes.
Alright, so no question.
The sheet that has, at this point in time, what the allocations are for golf courses, is that part of...
That's what Russ and Steven have to work on.
Yes, and it's changed.
Since when I got in my package.
Yes, it's changed.
But I'm not getting it tonight.
No, you're not, because it's not complete, because you guys just gave it to...
And when I get it, it'll be number two, best two, or three, or...
Rev Two.
They're all not gonna be Rev One.
Well, this is proposed version one, but just for you, I will make it version two.
Or one point one, I mean, I don't care, I wouldn't be able to differentiate.
Two, I was just gonna say two.
You want two, you want number two?
It'll be just for Bob.
Moving on.
Alright, so any questions for admin for Laura? Here now? Go ahead, any questions for Bill?
I think the bills were having issues with meters and stuff like that, and got some replaced over in our community, so we'll see what happens when we do the wet check.
Yeah, they've both been replaced.
Staff did a great job on those two, getting them fixed and everything.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, I, I just have one question. Has Magnolia Lakes homeowner reached out to you to move that?
Not to me.
What? Good, I do that one. Where are we gonna try to locate that sewer manhole over in, uh, Calaway Greens? That sewer manhole, we couldn't find, see the pavement, that comes off the golf course and serves all Cypress links, comes down. I have a feeling it fell off the scope.
It has fallen off the radar.
Yeah, we have a manhole that is missing.
Okay.
It's one that was flooded on the golf course.
We'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and take a two-minute break, because we don't have a car.
Yeah, talk right now.
In open silence.
Two minutes.
It was a manhole.
Hurry up. And, um...
Did, I, do you not want the, the verolla bar?
No, I don't want.
You have to, you know, you want the verolla bar? Alright, Laura wants it.
Is there rain in it, and, um...
I have cinnamon, that's why I want it.
You should go have one of the Snickers moments, like...
You're not, you and your, you're hungry.
I, actually, I was wrong. They actually did email asking for a quote from the, from you guys, to reality, because we won't tell the homeowner until I have a price. I, I think I sent an email to Wesley. Thank you. It was like, this is my dinner.
We need to talk offline, because there's other, there's bigger issues, we can't do it.
Oh, that's not fair, she sent me the email.
Okay, we can't do it.
So we can't do it.
And, between the parcels, I don't know.
Oh, but we, the H O is willing to give it to you. We'll talk. I love Bill, he just, he says so much without saying anything. You get that lovely smile on your face. He says it all, and she just looks at me, and I, that's a whole conversation.
And, and to, so...
Alright, so we're back to five oh five.
To the sewer, to the sewer thing, we've got the pilot vendors mobilizing in the next three weeks.
I know it, that's why I wanna find that manhole.
No, no, the pi, the meter project, the meter, actual new pilot meters. So we'll get that back on the docket, but it's coming up deeper and more.
On what now?
To, to follow up on that missing, where we couldn't find it.
No, I'm talking about a sewer, sanitary sewer manhole.
I know, I'm saying staff is, we have three different pilot vendors coming in right now, we've got a lot on our plate.
Okay.
It'll...
I'm just gonna make sure we get it.
Where was it at?
Yeah.
It's, when you come into Calaway Greens, you have that median. We measured it off as best we could, it's somewhere under the blacktop at the end of the median.
Alright. Anything else for, for Mr. Shaw?
None.
As you're going in, the end of the median.
At the end of the median, as you're going, when you go in, when you get to the end of the median, it's right there.
Okay.
And it's coming off the golf course.
Alright.
Nothing else for Mr. Shaw?
No.
Anything for Paul, he might not answer all, I'll, we'll tag team this report, but anything for Paul?
Hey, Paul.
Couple of questions.
Me too. Go ahead, question.
Okay, the bathymetric surveys and settlement, we, uh, for twenty-six, hundred twenty-four thousand, is that in the budget right now?
That is in the bond, we did not put it in...
So it's bond?
It's bond, fine.
Okay. Alright, uh, the surface water area, hundred seventy-nine thousand.
And the bond?
That's also a bond. And the master irrigation we talked about today?
Bond not paid for by Pelican, bond...
No, 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 I, I...
But bond.
No, I know that, I just wanna see how we're, we're hoping that either they get some grants maybe, or...
But bond.
But, or, okay. Alright. Thank you, that's all I had.
You have anything?
I have.
Okay, I just have follow-up, and I did follow-up with staff this morning when I was here. Um, Matt Tower, regarding lake maintenance.
Okay.
One feedback that I had given, uh, L and Stephanie...
Stephanie L.
Um, because I did observe on, on, on a few ponds. So we talked about the band, right, the ten to twelve feet band, and I think Ed and I talked about this. So when they're doing the maintenance, so they will do two types of maintenance in each pond. They'll be spraying the rock from the grass down prior to the lotorals. And then the lotoral treatment has to be done by the boat from the inside out, and that's not what they're doing. They're doing spray from the entire rock, and then they're spraying two to three feet of the lotoral band, starting from the rock end. But then that's not gonna help, so we just need to communicate with the vendor, so they have to do both. So they have to do both. So spraying in the rocks, and then maintenance of the lotoral has to be from the inside of the pond, otherwise we're never going to control that band.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of rock, a lot of fabric starting to show up.
And right now, right now, and right now is the time.
So, um, talk to staff today. The new vendor is getting their feet, but we are planning on having a, a sit-down meeting with them to address some of these issues.
Right.
Yeah, that's an interesting development, because we only had rock in a couple of places in Pelican. So we are being very free of having our lotorals close to the high-water mark, which is ideal. But if you have an eight-foot gap, you're kind of losing the benefit of.
Exactly, that's what I don't want to see, and aesthetically, it looks horrific, you know, so.
If we had lotorals right now in our ponds, they'd all be dead.
No, no, ours are not dead.
They'd all be dead.
Ours are not dead neither, because they're established, so they're kind of like unnaturally.
They don't look good.
But, yeah, they're sturdy.
They'll come back.
Yeah, exactly that. And then I have.
Drives bomb.
I have two other questions, you all know the answer, that's why I, I, I noticed a ton of screws on the new fountain. When I say a ton, probably 100.
Screws?
Yeah, so did we screw stop, did we screw the entire fountain all the way around to put the holiday decorations?
There was, but they're coming out Monday to do repairs on cracks on warranty work. And then we're going, staff is going to be repainting it.
Would we screw stucco?
That's not, that's not, the reason why I'm saying that is because of water intrusion. I want to know, was it holiday people that wanted to put screws in and put the lights? Because if they did, then I need staff to go evaluate that, because it needs to be silicone, it needs to have water production, because that's what happened with our monument.
We just did, before we painted all of our monuments, we sent our handyman in, took all the screws out and reclawed.
Because that's the worst thing for a ground mound.
And they told us, don't ever do that again.
We met with the county, the engineering team, and they are, they, the fountain people are going to come out and, because it's not only that, there's some cracks too. It's all under warranty, they're going to come out Monday, so it's going to look ugly next week, because they're filling it with silicone.
Okay, I don't have a problem with the warranty work, that's separate. I have a problem with us taking a brand-new structure, regardless if they're warranted or not, and putting a ton of holes with screws, which is something that was a problem 30 years, 20, 15 years. Because I, if it is the people that did the holiday, all I'm telling you is that they put a screw, and if they didn't go through, they just move it on, there's a hole, there's a screw, there's a hole.
Yeah.
And we're going to have a problem, so.
That's what happened to that.
So I would be opposed of putting it, the amount of screws that are on that fountain is crazy, and then also algae, we're having some algae issues.
Staff, so we were contracting the maintenance of the fountain out.
That's filter, that's horrible.
We are, we have since taken that in-house, and Mark's team is tackling it. We're close to getting that clear, but there, you're going to see some warranty work back, and then staff is going to be repainting it, giving it a refresh, because the chlorine from the fountain and the white marks down the wall, we're taking those efforts.
But then again, Chelsea, I'll be honest with you, we're not running that fountain to specs. The fountain is too high when it's windy, and I know we had requests for the fountain to be windy, because it is, if it's not, it is not working properly.
I, listen, you and I can talk about that, because I thought that tooth and nail, that it was an engineering flaw. Not that you're, you're banking on the wind. I sat, you can, well, you can't ask Daniel Nathan, but I have emails that I keep questioning about the engineering design, and.
Okay, when I talk to Daniel, there's a sensitivity on the wind gauge, right? And originally, there was, it was Brian Point, which were complaining that the fountain wasn't shooting high enough. So then I know, I know a CISO that requested it to be put the sensor as the highest it can go, but by doing that, it was just putting water all over the place and bleaching everywhere. And I told Chelsea, no, we're going to run this fountain, we're going to run this fountain the way it's meant to be run, you know?
And we, we.
So we adjusted, so that's my question, we adjusted it?
Yes.
And I was checking to see if it's working, because I'm telling you, every time I go by, it is all on, dripping in the air.
Are we using irrigation water or potable water?
Potable, but the, the amount of, the amount of the bleach there is heavy.
It's chlorine, yes.
Chlorine water, yeah, thinking, so if you could just check on that for me, to make sure that the wind, it is working, because I, I don't disagree that it may have slipped down, but I just visually, because I drive often, I don't see it lowering and looking as much as I used to before.
Yeah.
And then, then that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, I took my notes, I'll follow up. Thank you.
I can tell you, just one, I have a problem, there's been a couple of times I've left after work, we're in super muddy, and there is nothing going up at all, so it was.
And then at night, I noticed the lights shut off, but it's, but it, between like 10:30 and midnight, sometimes the lights are not on, and I.
The, the lights are on at time, so, but I, when they look at the wind gauge.
Just to check the timer, because I always keep thinking like that.
Does the fountain run at night too?
Mm-hmm, 24/7.
You might want to look at turning it off. I mean, we don't know our fountains, and, oh, you save like $50,000 a year on electric, on the three main fountains we have.
It's not the electric, that's the cost, it's the water.
Okay, ours was electric.
It comes to ourselves, it goes through travel fund.
We just pay ourselves.
We go over here at 7:30, 9:00.
So, but, but if the board would like us to look at shutting it off, you know?
I wouldn't want to do that.
If it saves money, I mean, I'm all for saving money.
You got to do it.
Who sees it in midday?
I wouldn't want to do that, because the amount of flash that we're going to get, because me personally, like, we can go with the majority the board wants, just given that it's such a focal point, we'll never hear the end of it. We spend the 2 million, which wasn't our money, it was the county, but their money is us.
Oh, yeah.
So it's.
Well, I'm all about saving a dollar.
Everybody still thinks we paid for that fountain, and they don't get some.
We could try, we could try turning it off from 12 to 3 for a week and see if we can beat that.
Do you have any comments?
Okay. Uh, let's go ahead, so we don't, nothing else before, so go ahead, propose out Harris Linear Park.
We're not finished Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec isn't.
Yeah, that was, that was.
We did all it.
Oh, and I didn't finish my question, but I stopped with the word.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, the community bulletin board for $36,000 is on page 273. Is that a, is that done, is that already been approved, or is it?
There's two, which one is that one? The 36,000, I believe, was the soccer complex one?
It says community billboard, message board.
At the soccer complex.
Provided by Pratt.
So that's the one with the soccer field.
So is that bond money, or is that?
No, that would be new money.
So do we vote on it? Yep?
No, it's part of the capital budget.
So something to discuss, okay. Uh, the 2 million for the common amenities, 2 million, 5, not 6. Funded only by general fund bonds, pickleball court, softball, basketball, not softball, basketball, pedal wall, trailer playground. That's money we've already allocated?
Yes.
That's part of the bond.
2023 bond.
Okay, now, there's nothing in 26, 27, 28, even though we know there's positive stages offering to the board to do that.
Correct, we, yeah, the committee wants it in 2027, so we'll update that for future discussions with the board.
Okay, and then the last 300,000 is Parks and Rec deals, amenities, 300,000.
Bond.
All these bond numbers, that's all going to show up in the tax bill sooner or later. I mean, that's another $3 million.
There, the gateway residents have already seen that as part of last year's tax, or this year, I guess, tax.
What, in November, the tax bill you paid at the end of '24?
Yeah, so they started seeing that cost.
Well, not you and Pelican, but.
No, 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 I'm, I'm looking at.
We had it one year.
Yeah.
Yep, the first year was this last tax bill.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm calling a fight.
Nothing else from monthly reports?
No, go ahead, let's propose out Harris Linear.
Uh, this one was, you requested this, again, we need to, we don't need to, but it would be nice to identify the linear park, it doesn't necessarily have to tie L's name into it, but we thought with her retiring and serving 18-plus years here at the district, that the linear park may be most appropriate. If the board doesn't like that idea, we can come up with an alternative idea, but the point with the linear park is, it touches a lot of things that her career has touched, that's ponds, that's Parks and Rec, that's conservation areas, wildlife, et cetera, so.
36,000 is all that's sponsored.
My question was, I believe there was either 15 or 25,000 that we had set aside, the Pratt had set aside for the linear park.
Yes.
So to me, and that's the question I had to Chelsea, it's like, regardless of what we name it, that was the cost, and that was the cost that was going to be there from now on, but I just don't recall if it was 25 or 15,000.
It's 25.
Then, was it, when we were, when we were going to do it then, remember how I had, we asked, put in that path?
Yeah.
The additional leg of asphalt?
Mm-hmm.
And then, then you said, okay, let's go ahead and look at the signs, and we're talking about three years ago.
Yeah.
But that, they never came to fruition, because we, we wanted to do a sign that matches with everything else.
Yes.
So we have talked about it, and we had agreed, want, that it needed to be done, the naming of it is just something totally different, so my question was, regardless of what we name it, that's the cost for that thousand dollars, and we're looking at, can you just open the, yeah?
The sign? So that matches the dog yard, yard number?
The bare minimum, exactly, the sign over there.
Okay.
And I would require to do two locations, or you're proposing three?
We're not required to do two locations?
I was, I would think one.
One, one region?
I, I mean, as the budget allows.
The reason why I would, I wouldn't be okay with one, the only reason why is because if you start here on Griffin, and that's probably the location where I would have put the sign, if you go all the way down to the end, what, almost by the Pelican Service Road, it ends in the middle, and then you have gravel and saw, and then you have road, it doesn't tie into anything. So if it, to me, if we're going to do it, we could do this one in phases, and we could do just the entrance in Griffin, and even the entrance on the other side, because it needs more planning.
Yes.
You need to either.
I, I've seen them on other sections of linear parks, and.
Can, can you, can you point the, the map, I want to show Bob what I'm talking about, the?
Well, you're going to put this right over here on the, the drive?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The only thing I see is, right off the bat, is, I don't think the FPL is going to allow anything on the 15 feet.
14 feet.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll ha, I just, I just saw that number, we'll have to reduce.
Yeah, no, it's 14, because I remember, I remember Tony talking, and when we talked about Parks and Rec, cannot exceed 14.
And the clues of the, the trees that we put.
You got to go the other way.
Yeah, well, no.
Go the wrong direction.
No, no, you don't, no, I'm going there, here's the pool.
Yeah, the right way, you can go the right way. Or down here, or you're talking over here.
No, 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 I'm talking about where you were going before.
Oh, you're right. By Pelican, but, okay, that's right, I'm like, I thought it was up here.
Keep going.
Well, I thought you were going to put it up over here.
No, yes, right here, zoom in. See, Bob, the reason why I wouldn't do there, because you see, now.
That's by the access room.
Do you see where, show where the road ends?
Nobody can see it.
Your end's like way up here.
It ends right here, so it's, and then you have all this, so I think it would be pointless. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Well, you guys did ask for us to get pricing on making that, tying it in, and then putting it, and requesting the county to put a crosswalk there, so we're working on that.
Well, that kind of makes sense.
Then when the crosswalk comes, then we just do the other part, you know?
And I, I'm not anti-L at all, but I'm naming it after her, I mean.
I, I, yeah, I, I've had people ask me, what, what the hell is that all about?
Yeah, I, I don't know what to hear, but.
Especially when you're talking about lotorals, because that's not a, not a happy subject.
Uh, I would kind of rather see DSCD.
Would, would this be a revenue maker, like, anybody wanted to, naming rights of this?
Yeah, we could.
I would be, I'd be open to that.
Somebody, somebody.
Pay for it.
Somebody want to do naming rights for it and pay for it?
If you, if, to me, it would have more sight of people looking at it if it was built right over here.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I'm thinking, right?
Instead of down there, because you're going to.
Well, that's why I don't want it down there, because you can't even see it.
Yeah, that's what she said, don't put it there, at least not until we finish it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm okay with the concept.
Of, of the sign, not the name.
Yeah, I'd like to be open to possible names.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We could get Tony Pierce's law from him, but Tony.
That's what you know, really? You want?
Pierce Parkway.
Yeah, there we go.
Pierce Way.
Pierce goes with DP like Pelican.
Finally, Tony's Way.
Right, so, too, but.
That's a Pelican Preserve linear park.
There you go, really?
I'll have to have 1-800 number.
The path to Pelican Preserve.
It's this way.
You just go, go down, structure it, hop a couple fences, and you're there.
And you'll have an observation deck.
They have a position, I heard.
Put a sign on it, mutters welcome.
Here, wait, please, zoom down.
Okay.
All right, so then move on, so you got the, I'm giving, I'm handing out, Bob actually had handed in, uh, his review after the packet was published, so this is.
The packet's, they published too early.
And I did notice my.
You guys complained that we don't do it enough.
My was can, one page.
Yeah, no, that was intentional, Tony did that because your names were not on all of them, so there's the original copy that you sent in, and then there's a second copy where Tony added your name, but that's.
Just for some purposes, to make sure they have a record.
And so for next year, I actually added a little field on the bottom, it says completed by, so you can fill that out on every page.
Thank you.
See my comments, I got a beauty with Chelsea. I had the old form filled out too.
I saw that.
That wasn't in time. I don't know how we changed it, how come we didn't have five categories? But then, we had five, now we have four, but I guess we already discussed that before.
I think we, we, uh, we talked about this prior, like renaming, right, the 1 to 4.
Send it 1 to 5.
Yep, the, the changes that were made to the form that you gave.
She has one that does not meet, and, yeah. All of the additional ones, do you remember? I don't remember.
The open-ended questions, I found, we've heard. Okay, it's a good place to.
Converse.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do we want to start with this? This is, what does it say, Bob?
Oh, wait, this is Bob's.
That's because that's Bob's.
I thought this was a summary, I was like, why is it more different? No, he handed this in after the fact.
This is on when it counts.
I don't have it, it's not in the board, no.
Yeah, I was, I was doing this.
I think with Doug and Carol both gone, we should go with this.
Wait?
Yeah. I mean, there's only three of us here.
I agree.
Yeah, okay. And then we'd be.
The sign was deleted.
And then we'll be retroactive.
And what I would like to see is a compilation.
Yeah, this is. I have it, thank you.
I have it. Okay, so let's go ahead and then.
If we can pause, let me pull that up so you at least can see it.
She's going to send it to the board.
Yeah, I, if you've got that, let's have, we can look at it.
I have it.
I saw you started to do it, and I thought I was gonna do that, and then I got to his, and I thought, what am I doing this for?
I know, see that, see that, I, I got to yours, and I was like, what is that thing going here, I can't, I give up.
I, I got, I was confused, I didn't know what I was doing.
I have to.
Hang on just a minute.
See you in a moment.
So you, you have it as a handout, or you're just gonna forward it to?
I had a shot at appearing.
Just email it to us, as far as I'm sure.
Yeah, just email it to all of us.
All right, I can do that.
Well, I think I got.
I'll put my H R.
I didn't get it, no, I didn't get it.
The only one you got and not attached was me, 'cause I won, I followed you.
Yeah, I know, no, we're talking about tallying it out, like, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, okay, I can manually do that.
Yeah, but she said she hadn't, so she's gonna send it to us, and we're gonna talk about it.
No, that was a meeting.
I think also, from the standpoint of.
I was looking for my share, but.
Whatever action the board decides to take, the effective date, I can't recall what we did last year.
It can't be retroactive.
It was retro, just to make sure, so we could have that same date or similar date.
It could not be retroactive? I thought you said that you couldn't do retroactive pay, can't pay somebody who passed through that.
You can't, well, you, you can't pay for, activities already occurred, but the idea we're supposed to do at a certain point in time every year.
Okay.
If I.
And it was under anniversary, like, it was right around the same time, within a day or two, next year.
May.
Thirteen.
Well, May sixteenth is when you started, and then you had the initial bonus, uh, June fifteenth, so if we could do it by June five.
I, I prefer not to have my district review at the June, the.
Yeah, that's a public hearing meeting.
June fifth meeting, where we adopt the final budget, but that's why we have it for today, but.
Why can't we move it, once?
Why can't we just not finish this meeting, and then maybe try to reconvene later next week?
I mean, it's at the.
Then we can have Doug on the phone, and Carol on the phone, that's the only topic.
It's at the end, I mean, it's at the end of the meeting, so.
I don't care, don't make a difference, but I just think that the two of them need to have.
I agree, they shouldn't do this in a public meeting.
Yeah, so how about we, we, do you wanna reach out to Doug and Carol and see if those will.
Continue this meeting.
And we just want to see if this meeting works for them?
Is, is Carol in the town?
No, no, she's sick.
I'd rather, with her being sick, I'd rather give her some time.
She's afraid of coming over here.
Give her some time to, we can do it on the fifth, it's, it's fine, it's always at the end of the meeting, so.
Here's the summary.
I tripped her last time.
Anyway.
He doesn't have his ear in.
You can push it to the fifth, that's fine. That'll give me an opportunity to sit down with many.
You're gonna send us this here.
Yeah, I have to do that.
Have you sat down with everybody or no?
No.
No, no, I haven't yet, no.
I sat down with Flavia, with Bob, and with Carol, so I'll sit down, that would be.
Okay, so then, so then the next one's.
Okay, for that.
Okay, so you go like this then?
Six, we had a quick review.
I'll, I'll, you know, unless you guys.
That's what I'm saying, I just needed her to confirm with Doug if they can come on the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth is a regular Thursday, anyway, we're all usually committed to.
Oh, wait, I will be here in the twenty-ninth.
Oh, my God, nevermind.
Oh, by the way.
Back to Brazil.
No, by the way, here, you told me that of the last meeting, I only missed one meeting, okay, just the same as you.
So that's 'cause we always accept you, but you're never here.
You need my present here, you need my physical mind at this meeting, okay?
Absolutely.
Not him.
I do, I do, Bob.
I can do, okay?
All right, we are at the thirteen.
I was, I was worried, Bob, I was like, man, am I missing stuff?
So is there a motion to continue the.
We're doing the meetup, right?
Continue until the.
Twenty-ninth.
No, no, no.
That, that just.
June nineteenth, just your regular.
Move, no, move to June fifth.
The June fifth.
Oh, then it's not continued, it's just table.
Table to June fifth.
Table June fifth.
Okay. Maybe table was the first order of business that day, before, no?
It, it can be last.
Okay.
Public hearing is there, so, yeah, I understand.
Is that a day we have a workshop?
Yes, but she didn't want it in the beginning, she wants it today.
Because we have a public hearing that day as well.
Okay.
That's the high watermark for the budget that basically has people here.
That's right, that's right, okay, gotcha, all right.
And you're just done that, so, okay.
Yep, all right, so then, go ahead and move, district has any items?
I'll get the packet updated, then do Bob's updated one.
And then I'm gonna send you that last page too, if any of the data.
Yeah, please, send that to me, and I'll make sure that Cap P D F gets updated.
Go down to Genopee, the rest of, do you know, I think we're almost at the finish line of Genopee services agreement, that's I T services.
Did you happen to see they did send something over this afternoon, saying that they were good with everything, they were gonna draft the final thing and send it off?
That's my understanding, but.
Yep.
I've got better taxman handling that, so that'd be wonderful to get that out of the way. Uh, we have, I think, the, most, the signed parcels, irrigation meters, Charles Manson, he was going to get it to us as soon as ASAP, as they were going back to the records of U S Home, Lennar, W C I, trying to ascertain the correct entity, because of all the various entities are involved in the bankruptcy, and the number of documents after that, so Charles has been very helpful the last week on trying to wrap that up, so hopefully that 'll work timely enough for, for the pilot program, the meeting program. The, uh, various, I'll go back to, down to, uh, starting with roads and streets, again, we know where we are in that, appreciate the board's action, St. St. Louis, I have my direction as to how to proceed on that, we've been cussing their counsel, the public hearing for the rates and fees, that's coming up, that's been finalized, Pelican Reserve, it's on hold, the irrigation, the, Chelsea, what's going on with the M I, M O U lease with Lee County?
Uh, they have to reach out to county lands.
Okay.
They're, they've got some internal discussions on how to do it.
Okay, in the Chamber of Lawsuit, that was, uh, the Suffolk Fall, Chippin Fall allegedly the Sherwin Soccer Complex, and worked through, contacted the carrier, retained counsel, and the, were kind enough to send me the proposed responses to the lawsuit.
What do they answer?
Uh, more than fifty thousand, that's all they have to allege, you know, fifty thousand, and we have a sovereign immunity cap of two, greatest exposure is two hundred thousand dollars, and that's under sovereign immunity. The, uh, finalizing, I touched behind a Tetra Tech contract, used to be the C T B G requirements, that's on my radar to get that to Chelsea, Daniels Parkway Apartments Utility Issues, we have finalized internally, and I think we provided them with the outsized agreement, but the well agreement, I have my final comments back from Tetra Tech today, the folks from Daniels Parkway, D D Parkway are wanting to get that in hand, and so, Chelsea, after you look at it, maybe we should have a call with Steven, his commenter, and so we can, I want to get that out to Brennan, uh, right away, so if we can, the teams call me, it's my afternoon, that'd be wonderful.
We'd love a Friday afternoon meeting.
Yeah, only because I have no meeting in the morning that I've got, I'm sorry, I don't rub them, trust me, you know, like, Monday morning meetings and Friday afternoon meetings are.
Monday mornings, not so bad, Friday afternoon sucks.
Sorry, the Talley's Office Park, I have a new direction from the board, uh, to try to wrap up, that would be nice, Gateway Greens, we're still waiting inspections or repair on, or where we are on that.
Oh, that, we're done.
I know, it's.
I told Chelsea, so we need to get Steven just to come in and look at it, we're done.
I sent a notice to Tetra Tech, so as soon as I get confirmation based on the letter that they sent, they gave us previously, we'll bring it back in front of the board.
Okay, now, the dollar amount for the medial actions are.
They did all the work.
Oh, wow, okay, so I think, if I recall correctly too, I think the documents were good form from Mark Adams' perspective, but.
The only, the only thing that we had was the, uh, getting those two, uh, in what's raised.
Yeah.
And I appreciate Mark's workup, working with him is really, it's been very good, um, he's a good guy to work with, he's accessible all the time, and, uh, that's all I have, absolutely no questions.
No, no, I'm passionate, I don't have anything to tell you, nothing for Tony, Bob, nothing for Tony?
No, nothing else for Tony, I like some of these things that aren't current, maybe to slip down to the bottom, rather than being, like you skip.
Yeah, well, yeah, just, just hit the high points up top and then.
Okay, I'll do that.
Tony's constantly taking, uh, throws from Chelsea too, so.
He loves, he loves updating his thing.
One question I got when we were doing all these papers, how is it that, uh, West Links, what was it called, uh, Wesley's Office Park, how did that road get dedicated? I found no copies of a completely, nothing of that being sent to the C D D, and we've been maintaining that road since Christ was a child, how'd that happen?
I, I don't know, I've not performed research on that.
West Links?
West Links is, if you look in it, it's, it's assigned to us.
Uh huh.
It was a P O A, it was dissolved.
Uh huh.
What was the method that they got that road to us, that we couldn't use for the rest of these?
We can look that up.
Well, I guess the question is, if LIPA shows it, again, LIPA is not always accurate as to the ownership of it, it's not evidence of ownership, it's an indication of what they probably praise or based on some document believes is owned by a particular entity, it does not.
My thought was, is that if it, if it was successful and it happened, how do we find out how it happened so that we can repeat it?
Like.
From, no, from Fairway Lakes and Worthington, oh, those are other two nightmares.
Well, the good thing is, I guess, we can work with Ben, he's willing, so the other ones are.
That, that's huge, yes.
That, that, I mean, that's our biggest thing right there, all right, so nothing else?
I was on my list to do some digging. Yeah, I did have one.
Go ahead, Tony, let me go, okay.
And I don't know if we can discuss this here, but was contact made between you and P P C A's attorney?
Yes.
Is there anything to report, or, is that gonna be later, or what? Uh, did have a conversation, and, uh, I sent her, I followed P P L, I hadn't done it, where I sent the board to find the invitation for the mediation, and then we had a conversation that we'd rather have not on the record.
Okay, so we'll just follow the rules, okay.
You're gonna talk to us individually, or?
I gave it to you.
I agree, okay, fine, it's just that I knew that conversation took place yesterday.
So future board business, agenda management, anything that Chelsea needs to adjust, anything, any questions for her on agenda management?
I just wanna bring to your attention that, um, I forgot to mention earlier, FPL will be mobilizing to the area again on May twenty-seventh, uh, to finish the.
Continue.
The, finish the project, so there will be land closures, M O T, all that fun stuff, so they did get their permit, so.
That's going pretty smoothly over here.
Yeah.
If Flavia stays out of it.
Flavia stays walking at, on Griffin.
Well, it's, it's going smoothly, but I, I'm, I'm concerned as to what's gonna happen, because the median between the sidewalk with, uh, the grass strip between the sidewalk and the curb, all where they're at, is dead.
Yeah.
Is dead.
Due to their efforts or the lack of irrigation?
I don't know why it's dead, but it's dead.
We've reduced all of our irrigation to one day a week.
Still, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be.
He's talking about a specific location, in which I do have pictures while they're working on it, so, and I think it's a picture that I showed in the area they were working, and it was nice and green, and then now it's dead, 'cause I just, 'cause that's for the hazard, that's, yeah.
Paul needs to go down there and take a look, or, I don't know, that's not Paul, that's, uh.
Paul, Angel.
No, that.
Angel.
Irrigation would be hidden, that would be, uh.
Angel. Angel.
Yeah, 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 I was trying to think, I wanted to say Bill Shaw, uh, the issue is, somebody needs to go down there and look at it, 'cause it is dead.
Send me the location.
Just dead, just, everything north of Walden Lakes is dead, the green grass strip.
And I think it was, I mean, I'm totally speculating, but I think something broke and they shut it off, because the picture that I have.
That's exactly what I think.
Do you remember me, the picture I had, it was nothing but mud, it's like, I haven't put a mud between that area, when the guys were working, so, the picture that I sent Daniel, I may even have it, it's exactly where.
And they didn't turn it back on?
Yeah, no, they kept it, and then, because I complained, because they were doing the job right, and then they just left.
To me, for that to happen, uh, Mainscape would have been the one I would have thought that would shut it off, and I.
Well, we'll find out where, what type was.
Yeah, how often do they do wet checks?
Once a month, well, they're supposed to do it a month. All right, so no other questions for Chelsea and agenda manager?
One final note, just where we discussed at the last meeting about the president's council meeting and going, reducing those, so we canceled the Hampton Park one, and then, uh, we're keeping the, whatever the next one is.
October.
And it's gonna be here.
Okay, perfect.
We're not going elsewhere.
All right, that's fine, all right, so we'll go ahead and move to supervisor comments, I'll start with you, Bob.
Okay, I have one I have to bring up, has to do with conservation areas. So I'll show you these.
Hey, out of the, the one, it's called a conservation.
This is a conservation, don't be, everything isn't negative, come on. Okay, there's four areas, this is kinda like our landscape.
Three, three.
This is mine, I got four areas of the ton.
Okay.
Okay, the first one is on the upper right-hand, left-hand side, you see the big red circle, that is a conservation area designation that I believe Pelican has in their contract and has been maintained.
So by just north of the park.
C five, yeah, yeah, that area, yep, the second area is the circle on the right-hand side, upper, and that's conservation area fifty-two?
Yeah, fifty-two.
And that historically has been, at least we have referred to it as Gateway, and we're not doing it, I don't know that.